Welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission meeting today, Tuesday, March 15th, 2022 at 5:30 PM. While we will have to amend the agenda, I'd first like to start off with a roll call.
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Woodrow Hay.
President.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Okay, and Commissioner Pennsurgah?
I am present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. My next question would be is that do we have a certification of the supervisor of elections results from the March 8th election?
We do not have certified results yet.
Okay, so we will not have that as part of the agenda and we will move on with the invocation led by our own Ms. Crystal Gibson, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Romulus. Would everyone please rise?
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for bringing us together to work together to do the business of the city. Ask that you give everyone wisdom, Father, and that you help us to act in civility, Lord, and represent you well. Pray that everything tonight works well with the technology and that you would help us to express ourselves civilly and, Lord God, do the business of the city well. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we will move on to the agenda approval additions, leations, and corrections. We will, I guess, table the announcements that the supervisor elections results to our next city commission meeting. For myself, I'd like to move item 3A to the end of the meeting.
3A?
Well, it's to the point where if we declare a vacancy, then there we can move forward with accepting a applicant for that vacancy. Otherwise, he would have to wait to the next meeting. It's up to Commissioner Pennsurgah if he wants to put in his letter of resignation. When does he want his letter of resignation to be effective?
A letter of resignation has already been submitted. This really is a matter for attorneys to decide now because I am still a current commissioner because no results have been certified. If it's, I'm not sure if it's legally permissible to declare something vacant if I'm still here. So I would defer to the attorneys in this case.
Yeah, Mike Sorillo City Attorney's Office, yeah, that would defer that item until there's an actual vacancy. I'm sorry, Mike Sorillo City Attorney's Office, my apologies. You would not declare that vacancy this evening because the seat is still occupied.
So he would not take office today?
He takes office when he's sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So then we don't have to worry about, so we'll remove that or from the agenda?
That's correct.
Okay, so no 3A. In addition.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Do we have any feel for when that will happen? Because we've already announced a re, I mean, a runoff on the 22nd.
We did not. That is something that is on items for 3K.
So that on hold or in the air?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor. The city clerk has contacted the supervisor of elections and it's anticipated that by, hopefully by Monday, there would be certification of the results and so then we could have the swearing in sometime thereafter.
Thank you.
So for item 3K, can we have that announcement today?
Nope, that also has to be removed from the agenda, Mayor.
All right. So that date most likely will change as well. And then in addition, I just received an order from Ultimate Bakery regarding items 6C and 6D to respond to their emergency filing. And so I request that that item gets tabled to the next city commission meeting.
6D as in dog?
6C as in cat, 6D as in dog. And, yep, I did ask everyone, please silence or turn off your phones. And the last item is for future agenda, item 13D. There is no name associated with the renaming of Demonstration Garden Park. And as this was my request, what I'd like to put it as with the subject to approval of the family would be the Stanley Dale Davis III Safety Justice Memorial Gardens. Yes.
Chair, just because I didn't anticipate weighing in on any future agenda items or any agenda items for that matter, because I thought that at the beginning of this meeting there would be the changing. I'm not personally in favor because I haven't done any look into any of the future agenda items to move it up.
All right, does anyone on the commission have another objection?
You would like this renaming completed today, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm just saying that for the future agenda item to be called discuss renaming the Demonstration Garden Park to the Stanley Dale Davis III Safety Justice Memorial Gardens, subject to the family's approval and discussion. I'm comfortable. Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Um, I'm comfortable making the change to the agenda item name. I just don't like the name itself, but then again, that may be a discussion for when that item comes about. I just don't want it put in print. That way it doesn't become what you're already proposing now.
I mean, that's where I did propose it and we did agree to a renaming. And so I would want it to have it what I would like it to be, but if you're saying that that is not the case and we have a majority that says we'll let it up for the, when the item is up for discussion, all I am saying is that is what I would intend to do. And so because I have the ability to do that now, that is what I'm doing.
And I'm fine with that. I would just drop the safety justice that part. I don't know, is that part necessary? Why is that part necessary?
It's for SJ.
No, I understand. So why not give it just his name? If you want to name it for him, what's, what's with all the other? Okay, that's why I didn't want to get into this because now we're talking about the actual item and it's not even an item that's on the docket for today. So hence my point.
So yes, Commissioner Katz?
I would just recommend with respect leaving it be because it's a discussion item on future agenda. We don't have the authority to choose the name for the future commission when they discuss it in the future.
I, I would say that we have the ability and I'll ask our attorney to title an agenda item. If not, then we will leave it as is.
Yes, the commission, Mike Sorillo City Attorney's Office, you can title an agenda item, but remind, I just want to remind the commissioners a process for naming city facilities and parks.
Right, it has to go through the process.
Correct.
And I believe that having the Stanley Dale Davis III Safety Justice Memorial Gardens would help with that process to give staff more information. So that is where it's either a yes or a no, and that's all I'm asking.
So Mayor, I'm going to support you on this because really it's just an agenda item naming. I think we still need to have that conversation. I do support the idea of naming this area. However, I have not personally spoken to the family and I can't commit to any specific name until such time I've spoken to them and we've had that discussion. So for the purpose of renaming the agenda item, that's fine with me.
All right, thank you.
I do concur with the renaming. However, as Commissioner Pennsurgah said, I do want to delay that naming until we talk with the family.
Absolutely. All right.
Mayor Grant.
Yes.
Crystal Gibson, city clerk. I would ask that we do move forward with item 3K, the proclamation for the runoff election based on unofficial results since we're expecting the county to certify it literally the day before the runoff, so that all of our procedures will be in place for us proceed on Tuesday for runoff.
Okay, and then I'll ask our attorney, is that okay to put it back on the agenda?
Yes.
All right. So for a rundown, we have taken off item 3A. We have tabled items 16C and six, I'm sorry, 6C and 6D, and we have renamed item 13D. And if there's nothing else, may I have a motion to approve as amended? Thank you.
Sir.
All right, I have a first and a second.
Did you mention putting back 3J?
And thank you, and I didn't say, I didn't say that we took it off.
Okay.
Didn't include that. So I said we took off item 3A, we tabled 6C and 6D, and we renamed item 13D. And that was the motion and that is the second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right, informational items by members of the city commission. Commissioner Katz?
Nothing to disclose, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Romulus?
Hmm. I have nothing to disclose in terms of the items on today's agenda, but just want to again send my regards to everyone in the public and my apologies for my inability to show up in person. Again, I am dealing with a personal injury which prevents me from being in person in chambers. I want to thank everyone who sent their thoughts and prayers and food my way. So I do appreciate that and the support of everyone who's been supporting me throughout this time. Thank you.
And then Commissioner Pennsurgah?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no disclosures for this agenda, however, I will reserve my comments for the swearing in.
Okay, and then Vice Mayor?
I did speak with Bradley Miller and Dr. Schneider just recently, and I did attend the musical at the amphitheater, but no other disclosures at this time.
All right. For myself, on March 2nd, I attended Crosspoint Elementary for Dr. Seuss Day. I read Oh, The Places You'll Go and The Things That You Will Think. March 4th, I attended the groundbreaking for the Heart of Boynton Village Apartments. On March 5th, I attended the Asian Fest over in Tropical Park. March 7th, I celebrated my 39th birthday. March 10th, I was over at the Art Armory for the opening of the Sistine Chapel, and I encourage everyone to get their tickets. It's an amazing experience to see the paintings up close. In addition, I want to bring whatever I said in the sunshine on March 10th. There was a presentation from the city commission regarding item 5B, and I just didn't understand how they graded the applicants by each applicant and not by each program and requested that each program get its own grading, not by each applicant. And, and last, or not last, and then on March 12th, I attended the CRA's Blarney Bash. And even though the weather wasn't 100%, it's, everyone had a great time. And I did, it took some of our residents to the, the fourth floor or the third floor because of the rain, and it was a wonderful viewing. And so hopefully we can get sponsors for our events and use those, the third and fourth floor as a way to generate revenue for the city. And the last thing that I would want to say is that because of the agenda today, I made promises to attend an event at 7 o'clock tonight that I will be going to. So I will be doing my best to go through as much of the meeting as we can. And with that, oh, and regarding an item for public hearing, I did speak with Bonnie Mescal. So with no other informational disclosures, we will move on. Yes?
I do want to take a moment to just say that at the dais, each person received a gift from myself, thinking that today was going to be the last day that we were all going to be together. This was my way of saying thank you and showing my appreciation to each member of the dais here that I've served with for anywhere from the last four to six years. I appreciate each and every one of you and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors and your gifts are pretty personalized, knowing all the things that you're, you're, you're all, just showing you all what you mean to me and the impact that you've had on my life and my family and on this city. So I hope that your gifts are just a small token of appreciation to show my friendship and support of you and your personal and professional lives moving forward. Thank you very much, and that is all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Romulus, I remember our first meeting at RC Caribbean for lunch, and it's, it's amazing to see where we are now, almost a decade later. And with that, we'll move on to announcements, item 3B. Which is State Senator Lori Berman and State Representative Joe Casello to provide an update of the 2022 Florida legislative session.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. I'm State Senator Lori Berman, District 31. Very proud to be your senator, and I want to start the meeting by thanking Mayor Grant and Commissioner Romulus and Commissioner Katz for your service. I know this is one of your last meetings, so thank you for everything you've done. Boynton Beach has really benefited from your leadership and I, and I'm sure everyone here appreciates everything you've done. And I want to congratulate our new mayor, Ty Pennsurgah, and also our new commissioner, Angela Cruz, and good luck to those who are in the runoff that's coming up. So we literally finished the budget yesterday. It is hot off the press. Rep. Casello flew in this morning. I flew home last night, and so we're, we're giving you all the latest news. So last year, when I came here, I reported to you that we had a $100 billion budget. This year, we have a $112 billion budget. So it's an extraordinarily robust budget, and we're doing a lot of good things for Floridians in the budget. Visit Florida, which helps promote our tourism industry, got $50 million. We have a growth fund grant program which got $50 million. We have Enterprise Florida, it got $12 million. Our universities, FAU, got hundreds of millions of dollars. Palm Beach State got hundreds of millions. $100 million was allocated for the new University of Florida campus in downtown Palm Beach or West Palm Beach. So it is really robust. I'm very happy to report that Boynton Beach got a, got a really good budget item for the regional crime prevention strategy. Got 525 from both the House and the Senate, I believe. So that's a really nice allocation. I would advise you to make sure that the governor doesn't veto it and make sure that it stays in the budget and work on that. As you know, as you heard, as I'm sure everyone heard, the session was very filled with a lot of culture wars, unfortunately, and we really saw a lot of issues that I don't think Tallahassee should be debating. And as a result, some really important issues that we should have been debating did not make it through, particularly the, the chain, the rise in property insurance that so many people have had to pay in the state. We didn't do any laws that address that at all. And the other thing that's pretty shocking is we did no laws in response to Surfside. The law that was proposed would have required inspections of buildings and increasing the reserves. There was a dispute between the House and the Senate on what was an appropriate amount of reserves and how many years you could require reserves for. So the bill died in the last days of session. I know that some other cities have taken it upon themselves to require building inspections, and that's something that you may want to consider because the legislature doesn't meet again until November. So there will be no activity, I don't, in that regard until then. There is discussion about coming up for a special session, so it's possible. Most of the discussion is centered around property insurance as well as the redistricting regarding the congressional maps. So I don't think that there, I don't know if anything will be done on the Surfside issue. I do want to talk a little bit about the redistricting. So in addition to the budget, which was our only prior, only requirement, the other requirement that we have once every 10 years is to do redistricting and draft new maps. The Senate drafts their own maps, the House drafts their own maps, and then both the Senate and House prepare congressional maps. We prepared a Senate map very early, which we passed out. In the new Senate map, my, the district that I will be running for continues to include Boynton Beach. It starts at the Delray, I mean, in the Boca Raton Glades Road border, goes up to the top of Boynton Beach. So as I, before I had Lake Worth and a lot of communities further north, in the new map, I only go up to Boynton Beach. And then it goes at the new, my new district would go all the way out to the Glades, but I will still continue to be your state senator, hopefully if I am honored enough to be reelected in November. The congressional maps have been very, very contentious, and I don't know how it will end up. We drew a map and then we passed it out. The House drew a map, it passed it out, then the governor proposed a map. The House redo, redrew their maps to go sort of more in line with the governor's suggestion, but then they were worried about it, so they did a map that wasn't a Plan B. So we ended up passing two maps for the congressional maps. We all, it was done in both chambers. And those, one, one is, has less minority districts and one has a few more minority districts. And the governor has said he is going to veto both of those maps. So we don't know where we are. Where it's, it's really in, not in a great situation right now. If the governor vetoes it, I don't know if it goes to the courts or if we come back and redraw the maps. There is already a lawsuit pending in court asking the court to draw the map. So the congressional maps are very much up in the air, but I will say the maps that were drawn, all the maps, I think even including the governor's version, are pretty similar about how the congressional districts will be in South Florida. The disputes are in the Orlando area and in the Tallahassee, North Florida area. So our congressional maps will probably be pretty similar to what we have right now. There won't be two substantial changes. I'm going to defer to my colleague to talk to you about some of the preemption that happened this session, so you'll be prepared for that. And I think I should wait and I'll take questions after my colleague so we can answer anything that, that wasn't covered. Thank you.
Good evening. Wow, it's good to be back here. I'd like to start by just saying, Commissioner Romulus, Commissioner Katz, thank you for your service. You've made the city a much better place for it. To my friend, my neighbor, Mayor-elect Ty Pennsurgah. I remember the day you came up to my office, came up there with a few friends and you were asking about running for city commissioner here in Boynton. And we had quite a, quite a discussion about it, and you decided to run. And now I get the opportunity to congratulate you as mayor-elect of this great city. Thank you. Mayor Grant, boy, I tell you, served the first term with you. You were, you talk about green and newbie, you were it. But to watch you grow over the years and how you've developed leadership qualities and led the city to where it is today, I commend you, sir. And I think there's some great things ahead in your future politically, and I look forward to witnessing them. And our city manager, I remember the day we went to Tallahassee and we were up there and I said, I'm going to be in this chamber someday, and you gave me the city manager laugh, and you said, I don't think that's going to happen, but it did. And I'm glad to be able to come here before you with the Boynton Beach always in the, in my heart, that always in my heart. And why am I giving all these accolades? I'd just like to give a quick shout out to Mark Efron out there. We wouldn't be in this beautiful building and this chamber if it wasn't for Mark and his company who put this all together. Must be a Republican. Okay. We, you know, as the senator said, it was a contentious, was a contentious session. We talked everything up there from abortion, we talked about, don't say gay, we talked about woke, we talked about everything. But the most, one of the most important things to me was the renaming of the, of the state dessert. I don't know if you, you probably don't, or might, that it went from the key lime pie to the strawberry shotcake is now the state official dessert. So I fought hard, you know, for my Italian heritage, but a cannoli, and I was not successful, but hopefully I can bring it back next year. With all that being said, we usually start these things off by saying the good, the bad, and the ugly. It's like a Clint Eastwood movie, and it's, every year it's basically the same. Some of the good things that did pass that will affect us here in Boynton Beach is the Florida Tourism Marketing, and that was filed by Senator Hooper. And what it does, it delays the scheduled repeal of the Florida Tourism Industry of Marketing, Visit Florida, and the Division of Tourism Marketing and Enterprise Florida from 2023 to 2028. And for those next five years, it'll be funded at the $65 million. And David Scott, you might like that. I think that comes in your silo. Another one that, that passed up there, good, if you're a non-smoker, was the regulation of smoking by counties, municipalities to ban smoking at your beaches and in your parks. That's good. But, you know, it was said to me by one of my colleagues from across the aisle that mandates without enforcement are only strong suggestions. So I think that'll be a tough one to enforce, but it's there under books for you. And to our police officers, this was a good year for police officers in Tallahassee, law enforcement up there. It gave incentives for police office, police officers to sign up, $5,000 revision upwards for the sheriffs and police and $5,000 one-time for new sheriffs who joined full-time and stayed for two years. It also makes it easier to apply to law enforcement training for ex-military to join. It makes it easier for current and former officers to obtain education credits, which is all good. Also, a $100 million was put into a, what they call the Hometown Hero Program. And the money will come from the 200, to, the 100 million will come from the 202 million out of the ship partnership program, and this would assist hometown heroes, assistant program for teachers, police officers, firefighters, and nurses. The other thing relating to law enforcement, they update to the drop system. They extended it three years in the drop for retirement purposes. And I, I would like to talk that maybe later on, you know, offline with the city manager and some of our new city commissioners about this, maybe extending that over into our, I don't know the, the physical impact it will have on a city by doing that, but I think it's a discussion worth, worth having. Bad things, some of the bad things that happened against local governments. A CS SB Bill 620, it was filed by Senator Hudson. And let me read this a little bit because it really will affect us in how we do business here as a municipality. It allows a business that has been engaged in lawful business or in a municipality for at least three years to claim business damages from the municipality if it enacts or amends an ordinance or charter provision that will cause a reduction of at least 15% of the business's profit as applied on a per-location basis of a business operated within jurisdiction. The bill provides three ways for a municipality to cure the business claim and avoid paying damages. Repeal the ordinance or charter provision, amend the ordinance or charter provision, or grant a waiver to the business from the enforcement of the ordinance or charter provision. I think this opens up for you lawyers, this opens up a can of worms where, you know, a business can come to you, the commissioner, and say, this ordinance that you put in place is hurting my business. And they can actually file lawsuits against you and claims and lawyer, lawyer fees. So that's just something that maybe you should dig a little deeper. I know city manager, I, I was always texting you when these things as they come up, to give you a little heads up on it, but I think this worth something to look, be looking into. And another one that came up, and I call this the Commissioner Katz Law Ordinance, and what it does, it's cracking down on our. And what it does, it's cracking down on our right to vote. This, it's a bad election bill, and it comes after municipalities the right to home rule by implementing several new preemptions. Among them, the bill prohibits and preems the use of ranked choice voting to determine election or nomination or elective office and voice existing, or future local ordinances authorize the use of ranked choice voting. And I find that interesting, and I know you've been a big advocate of this Commissioner Katz, and I believe in it. And we got, it's a prime example of what's gonna be coming up in the next week or so with this runoff election. It's gonna end up costing this city, I think, for one district, usually between $40,000 and $50,000 for a runoff, which the, it's the notorious low turnout, voter turnout. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a financial burden on the, on the city. And I, you know, I'm a ranked choice type guy, and I think that obviously we're gonna be preempted for even trying to implement that now. Vacation rentals, we can't have a session without coming back with the short-term rental, short-term rental vacation rentals this year. Once again, it got beat up before it really got started. And, but I, my short time up there in Tallahassee, I can assure you, things that get beat up one year, come back the next year, they don't die. Nothing dies in Tallahassee. It, it's always there. It's always there. Some of the things that, my things, I was proud to be the prime co-sponsor on the firefighter bill of rights, which gives our firefighters some rights as far as working conditions and such. As city manager, I know that makes you happy, but it, it is what it is, and I was proud to do that. And I filed the bill with, with the good Senator Berman here. It was solar, and what this would have done would allow schools, okay, in the state of Florida that are used for evacuation centers, emergency centers during a crisis, to install a solar panels on them. Up to $2 million, without taking it out of the cap that they have, the silo of the cap for the kids when they, when they do these schools. So up to $2 million. I'm proud to say it passed all my house and all the, it didn't make it. It, it didn't, I didn't get a shot on the House floor with it, which is frustrating. You know, when you work hard, as the Senator does and such, and we go through these committee process where they grill you, and you gotta have the answers, and it passes, it would no-no votes all through, and you go to the chair of, you know, to the House floor leader and say, can, you know, can I get this on the agenda? And they never give you a reason, but they know how to say no. So it, it is, it's kind of frustrating at best. And the Senator mentioned the Boynton Beach Crime Prevention Strategy that we had. We fought hard for that radio tower. It wasn't in the cards, that wasn't in the cards this time, but like everything I said previous, it comes back in Tallahassee. And just one more shout out I'd like to give to your lobbyist, my friend, Matt Forrest up there. There's no one that works harder, those halls up there on the fourth floor of the Rotunda, than Matt Forrest. And we're lucky to have him here in the city of Boynton Beach. You know, there was over like 3,000 bills filed and stuff, there's a lot going on. This is just a thumbnail of what's going, what's happening up there. But I would, I would encourage you, I would encourage you to look into some of these bills that, especially these preemptions, they're gonna have an adverse effect on our city at some point, one way or other. It's gonna be, you know, when it comes down to the brass tacks, it's, we're gonna be in courts. So let's get ahead of the curve, let's keep up the good fight, and I thank you for the opportunity to let me speak here tonight. We're always open. And before I close, I'd just like to say that, you know, these bills and these suggestions that we get, these policies that we get up there, we get them from people, the everyday, common people, who have an issue or a problem, or see a problem, and they call, and they say, look, this is what's happening. This is how I think we might be able to fix it. We can take that forward and give it to what they call the drafting department up there. It could be even written on a napkin. It's amazing work they do up there as people, and they draft the bill for us that's legal. And, you know, they use a lot of verbs and nouns in it. It's good. So I encourage you, if you see something or hear something, we're open for those suggestions. That's where some of the best ideas, some of the best bills, some of the bad bills come from, is from the, from the everyday working man and woman. So I thank you for letting me be here. We're always open for answers and questions, if you like. My office is always open. Like the Senator said, the districts have changed, that they change. And I noticed that we have the, our school committee woman, Erica Whitfield. And there was some, I'm sure she's gonna talk on the, some of the things that it's a little different now. The school boards, how they're gonna be made up, and term limits and all that good stuff. And I'm sure she'll speak and answer any of your questions on that. So if there's any questions, the Senator and I are here.
Well, first off, thank you very much for the, the presentation, Commissioner Katz.
Yeah, I was gonna echo that, and I noted in your comments, you mentioned Police Officers' Bill of Rights and Firefighters' Bill of Rights. I didn't hear anything about a Teachers' Bill of Rights. It's almost like up in Tallahassee, they don't really think much of teachers. But I know if you two had your ways, there would be a Teachers' Bill of Rights, and teachers would be respected up in the Capitol. So I appreciate your hard work.
The one good thing I will say is the Hometown Heroes, the $100 million that we put aside for down payment assistance does include teachers, so I'm happy to see that.
And just, just for a note, FYI here, your own city commissioner Katz up there, being a CTA president, comes up to Tallahassee and he fights for those teachers every day up there. I see him in a gala, I see him in the halls. He does some yeoman work up there, and Commissioner Katz, you should be commended for that, and you're absolutely right. There's this, for ever reasons, and I don't know what it is, the dislike of this particular unit of educators. And it saddens me to see that, that it really saddens to see, to see that. But it's people like yourself that put up the good fight that, and continue it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, people.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have school, school board member Erica Whitfield to present the 2021-2022 School Year State of Education Report to the City Commission.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for having me here. It's such a pleasure, especially knowing that we're right at the cusp of the, of the transition. So I want to say a huge thank you to Mayor Grant for your work. We're super appreciative. Obviously, I'm gonna continue to see you, Commissioner Katz, I hope. And I am so glad to thank you for your time and that we will be welcoming yet another educator to this commission, which is wonderful. And thank you, Commissioner Romulus out there, and Commissioner Cruz for joining us. So I'm so excited about the changes here in Boynton and this new beautiful building. So thank you so much for having us. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the state of the schools in Palm Beach County, and specifically here in Boynton Beach. I try to do this presentation every year to all my cities, because I want you to feel, you know, the connection with your schools and then have the ability to ask me questions. I'm gonna do a very short presentation today, if I can, hopefully. Actually shortened it down a little bit for you guys, so you're welcome. And I'm gonna just talk through a few things while we're here today. I'm gonna talk about some academic results information, some new stuff right off the presses. A little bit about discipline, mental health, and then the Wi-Fi. I'll just talk briefly about that. And then if you guys have any questions for me, I'm actually not gonna hit on legislation, but if you want to talk about it, I'm happy to. So we changed our mission at the School District of Palm Beach County, so I start all my presentations with it. The mission of the School District of Palm Beach County is to educate, affirm, and inspire each student in an equity-embedded school system. I think it really gets to the heart of what we're trying to do. One of the things that just came out last week, we got an executive summary from our superintendent, and we're talking about the data that came to us from the kindergarten readiness screener, it's called Flickers. And what it does is, at the beginning of the school year, it assesses each student in your kindergarten classes and tells them, tells us whether or not they were really ready to start kindergarten. This is so important, because it really shows us, you know, what's going on with these students and how much ground we have to make up. So obviously, you want every student to show up ready to go. That's what our pre-K programs are for. They can tackle that kind of issue and bring in a child, hopefully that's, that's reading already when they get there, if they can. It's not required, but it shows us something. So for a number of students that are currently considered ready for kindergarten, from this data from this past year, the 21-22 school year, our district average was 51% of the students, 51.4% across the district, were considered ready. And then I'm just gonna go through the schools that you have here. Citrus Cove was at 41.9%, Crosspoint was at 38.7%, Forest Park was 23.6%, Freedom Shores 43.5%, Galaxy 26.9%, Point Sienna 44.4%, and Rolling Green 36.5%. And I go to, I say that to show you that Boynton Beach is just a little bit lower on some of the schools, and sometimes quite a bit lower than our district average, which means that the teachers there have to really put that time in. And as Commissioner Katz was talking about, respect for the teachers, we should have a lot. Because specifically, the teachers in your schools are being asked to make up an even greater amount than other teachers at other schools, because they have to make up that ground over the years. The, the reason why I redid the data for you this morning, when I was working through it, I was doing a presentation just about what was going on with our diagnostic stores, and they're, they're pretty depressing. And so I wanted to try to find some uplifting data, so I was excited to change it for this. But I wanted to share with you at least just the sum up of the data that I was gonna share, which is that throughout the pandemic, the effect on the students was very real. The effect on our staff has been very real. You know, I keep saying, you know, everybody in the district is burned out right now. All the administrators, all of the teachers, I would say custodians are burned out. It's, it's been a, it's been a really rough couple of years, and the students have been very impacted by not being in schools. So what you saw, just in the trend of the data, is you'd see we were doing pretty good in 2019, and then 2020 came, and most of the kids were staying home. Going into 2021, we were starting to see, you know, that virtual learning was kind of the way that our middle schools and high schools were really being educated. And then when you come back and look at our data now, the general theme is that everyone has just gone downhill. There's a couple of bright spots within the system where you'll see that they did actually make up some ground and did fairly well. But by and large, it's just a trend down. So I promised good news, right? So I'm gonna share the good news with you. So we did actually look at, you know, how our students do. This is just really exciting data. It was something I was really interested in seeing. If you look at the cohort, which is how many students, you look at a student when they start in elementary school, and then you follow them all the way through till they graduate. How, how likely is it that a student who starts in one of our schools here in Boynton Beach is going to graduate at the end of their time here? So is it possible to take those students that are coming in a little bit less than they should be on that kindergarten readiness screener, and move them to graduate on time? And so we looked at all that data from the students that graduated in 2021, this past year. And we, I can tell you that Citrus Cove, a student who started there 12 years ago, 94% chance of graduating. Crosspoint, 82%, Forest Park, 89%, Freedom Shores, 94%, Galaxy, 81%, Point Sienna, 91%, and Rolling Green, 83%. So though the data is gonna be skewed based on the pandemic, what you can see here, and that I think is really exciting, is that we are graduating the majority of our students. We're getting them through. And that's really just a huge hats off to the teachers that are helping with these students. The other thing I wanted to talk a little bit about was our discipline rates. There's been a lot of concern about discipline in the last year. One of the things that I think happens with students is, when they weren't in the school for so long, they kind of lost that feeling of, you know, a lot of the, the control and the, you know, feeling strong and secure in their schools, a lot of that was gone. And so the, the staff, the teachers are all working on trying to get the students to, you know, somewhat calm down within their schools. So we did see some upticks in discipline this year. They're putting in a lot of supports around this. The other big struggle is really the mental health of our students, and this all goes hand in hand. When you're talking about discipline issues in the school, and you have a student who's struggling with a mental health issue, they're just gonna act out at school. That's one of the things that we're gonna see happen. So at Boynton Beach High School, which I know is one of the ones we're most interested in, in 2020, they had 61 students that were suspended in schools. That means that they were basically kept in the building, but not in their classes. And then in 2022, that actually dropped down to 38, which is great. So 38 students is the number of students in the whole year, for the first quarter, for the first half of the year, excuse me. And then Congress Middle went from 36 down to 13, so it was a little bit of a decrease in in-school suspensions. When it comes to out-of-school suspensions, Boynton Beach High School had 56 in 2020, and then it actually dropped down to 44. So in 2022, which is a little bit better. However, Congress Middle, as everyone here knows, has been struggling with a lot of stress. So 46 children had an out-of-school suspension, and then that went up to 88 in last year, in the beginning of the year. So the mental health impacts. I just want to let you know that one of the things that's really helped us through this time has been the referendum dollars that the community has given to us, and so we're so grateful for that. And I just want to say a huge thank you to the voters who, who voted for that in the past. One of the things that we have done with that referendum money is that we have put in mental health supports in all of our schools. So in each of our schools, we now have a school behavioral health professional following those referendum dollars. So in 170 district schools, we have 170 school behavioral health professionals. We have 130 certified and licensed school psychologists that support all 170 school, district schools, as well as charter schools. We have certified school counselors. And then we have something called co-located mental health professionals. The way that the system works, that I think is a brilliant idea, is we do kind of a tiered support. So it means everybody gets a little bit, and then as we find out that there's a bigger need, we go up, and people can get more services depending on their need. And then at some point, we will actually have children referred out to organizations within the community who can give greater levels of mental health support. And this is so important, because the students really do need additional supports. And this is something that wouldn't happen pre-referendum. We wouldn't have been able to do this work. So it's just a very huge thank you to the community that we are able to go forward and do this work for our community. I think it's very important. Finally, I want to give you a quick update on the Wi-Fi. Oh, wait, I wanted to mention one thing about mental health. Sorry, this got out of order. In the beginning of the year last year, just so you know about how many students are being referred, we had 3,000. This is district-wide. I can't give Boynton data, because it's too tiny. But 3,202 students were referred district-wide for mental health services, 2,243 received services on campus. And then the off-campus or the co-located mental health professionals that can come onto campus, 1,589 were referred, and 1,329 were receiving services, just in the, in the fall of this past year. Okay, so back to the Wi-Fi. One really great thing that came out of the pandemic is that we worked with the county and the funding that they got from the CARES Act to actually put free Wi-Fi for all of our students into our urban centers. So we were doing Lake Worth, West Palm, Delray, and Boynton Beach. And you guys, again, I have to thank you again, because you donated $75,000 to ensure that your students could connect to this network. The update currently is that we have, the county actually just submitted a permit request to the city of Boynton for 27 poles. And then as soon as that permit comes back, it was just submitted, you're not late or anything. They, as soon as that comes back, they will begin to design and install the fiber. And then in about six months, it'll completely come online here in Boynton Beach, so I'm very excited about that. Initially, this is gonna cover 1,428 students that are on free and reduced lunch in this area. So I'm very, very excited about, about that. And so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and stop, and let me know if you guys have any questions or concerns about your schools.
Yes. The, the quick questions that I had is that, one of the things that I've seen is that it is, the school system is trying to play catch-up for students that have failed, because I remember a couple of years ago, you were mentioning how many students have failed classes. Is the school system trying to encourage people to take five years or six years to graduate high school? Because, but if I'm not mistaken, the school system pays up until they're 22 years old?
They do, but I don't think we're encouraging that. We wanna try to get kids done it. So we have catch-up programs that we put in, so there are opportunities for students to get caught back up. If they do that, they wouldn't be graduating with their, their cohort. They don't, so they wouldn't be considered part of the graduation data. So I don't think we encourage it, but it is possible if they, if they are that far behind.
It's, it's something where, you know, when we, we get a little bit older, we realize that the people our own age aren't as, as important to us as when we were that young. And so that's something that I, I feel it's, it's better to make sure this, you know, my perception is better to make sure the students are learning the material at their pace, kind of a Montessori style, than trying to overwhelm them to play catch-up, because that's the issue, is that if they're, they still have to learn what they have to do this year, and playing catch-up means they have to learn what they were supposed to learn last year, which makes things a little bit more difficult. So that, that was one of, my only comment regarding that, hopefully, that the school district, you know, gives the, the students the option to saying, we don't want you to be overwhelmed and always having to see your mental health counselor at the school, because I heard they have waiting lines.
Yeah, they do. We definitely have people using them. I've been asking questions about that and seeing if the, the lines are so long that people can't get in. They assure me that they're not, and they can ascend. and seeing if the, the lines are so long that people can't get in. They assure me that they're not and they can ascend resources. Um, but it is a very good question because, uh, you know, it's kind of interesting when you didn't have this service for a lo- so long and suddenly got it and it turns out it was a super need, like people really needed to get this help and they're using it. So.
And also, I wanna make sure our teachers have access to that as well.
So we have EAP services and I literally talked to them last week because I was hearing stories that they weren't getting the services as well. Um, so one of the, um, the main people from our EAP program called me back and we did talk about it. And they said, um, the only time the EAP, uh, is struggles to service the needs of our employees, um, which is like the employee assistance program, you know, where you make a phone call and they'll assign you to a counselor within the community. You get six free sessions. The only time they have an issue is if, say, somebody had a very specific counselor need. So like they wanted, um, you know, maybe a woman and they wanted to meet in person and they wanted that person to have a Christian background. There may be a limitation on the specific type of counselor that they're looking for. But, um, there are counselors available, so they will work to get you into the person that makes you feel comfortable.
And my, you know, there are some huge legislative aspects that, uh, head our schools. And I think that's almost for a separate night.
I'd be happy to come back and talk about that, too. We're still kind of like regrouping. We're gonna be doing some, uh, kind of assessments of our.
Yeah, so hopefully you come back with what the, the state legislature did. But, you know, based upon one of the comments, the, the gender identity for K through third grade, you know, I was wondering if it works the opposite way in the sense that I remember in third grade, I was playing with one of those troll dolls. And the, the teacher said that that's a girl's toy. And I'm guessing that that would be not allowed anymore because you can't have a gender identity towards a, um, someone who's K through three.
Well, let me just say, um, that this is something that we do not, we don't teach sex education to our kids K through three. I've told, I've talked about this multiple times. And this is not a law that we expect to make a huge impact on the schools. We are going to assess everything, um, to make sure that we're in compliance because we, as a school district, want to be in compliance. I am not positive about something about that situation. Um, so I'd have to, I'd have to learn more about it to understand it. But I do know we will be going through all our curriculum, all our books, everything to make sure that there is no, um, place where we're going against the law. Uh, we don't believe that we are right now. And so we are trying to just make sure, cover our bases, um, that we are doing everything within the law because we don't wanna get sued. Um, and it's not something that we've ever done. So, um, you know, we're kind of in that place where we have to go through a lot right now to make sure.
So the legislature's made a law that we don't understand yet.
And we didn't need, we didn't need it. Um, I don't think it's gonna actually change the day-to-day school district practices at all. I think we were already, um, it's, it's unfortunate because I wish that, um, you know, they believed that we were trying to do the best thing that we could in the beginning and that nobody was trying to, you know, push gender, um, on children. So that was never something that we were intending to do anyway. And I don't think that, you know, I don't think it makes a difference.
Okay. Yes, anyone from the commission?
Yes, thank you so much, uh, for the presentation and thank you for your hard work, Ms. Whitfield. And as you know, we have a new commission coming in. And so my question is intentionally broad. Uh, you see all the data and you see what other municipalities are doing. My question is, where do you think is best for a city to come in and intervene and support to improve outcomes? What are you seeing other cities doing that are successful and what's not successful? What's the best way for us to be part of our school system and improve the outcomes?
Thank you so much for that question. That's actually one of the reasons that I do this presentation is I wanna make that connection. Um, some of the cities that have been the most helpful are ones that are, are giving resources to the after-school programs. So having additional tutoring programs, um, there's some programs out there, even one that impacts your community here, um, where they will, um, pay the actual teachers that are in our schools to stay after school and, and support. Um, we're actually raising that rate at the school district because, um, we've realized that, you know, like I said, teachers are burned out. They don't wanna do, um, additional work. So hopefully by raising that rate, we can do additional time. But really, these students need, um, more help. And so how do we get more help? And you know, as a, as a teacher, you know, this impact of, of teacher FaceTime. I think after the pandemic, we realized that having a human in front of you really means everything. And having a, a teacher who, who cares about you is everything. So supporting your teachers, uh, through this is, is crucial. And, you know, one of the things that I really like, um, is going to your principals within your community and asking them what would be best for them, what they need, where they see gaps that could be filled. Um, even if it is just even volunteer time, we're now allowing people back into our schools. So having volunteers from the community come read to the kids is always a wonderful thing. Again, recognizing your staff and your teachers. Um, I know you have a, an education task force. And so having those community members talking consistently with you all about what's going on in your schools, I think is, is really helpful. So building that connection, strengthening everybody up and recognizing that this has been really tough on a lot of people. And we have to, we have to come back as a community. And we'll come back and it will happen, but it's gonna take a lot of effort from all of us.
And just as a brief follow-up, are you seeing that we should be focusing our attention on any particular age group or grade level? Or is it across the board?
Pretty much across the board. Um, it's been, the data's pretty rough. It's really, there's only little pockets of, of like kind of success, um, throughout the schools right now. Um, and I mean, what the, what the staff are doing to make up is like Herculean. Like it's unbelievable what they're doing. So I wanna thank them for the efforts that they're doing to bring these children up. But they, they really fell behind during the pandemic. So now, you know, in a school year, we try to get one year of gains is what we call it. So we try to like go from, you know, you're a seventh grader and at the end of seventh grade, you've learned enough to become an eighth grader, right? That's the idea. But some people are having to make up two years of time, three years of time. And that, that is very hard for a staff member to do. So I think they need all our respect, our love, our attention, um, and, and our support through this.
I wanna thank you and I look forward to partnering with you.
So excited to see you here. It's gonna be great. Thank you. Thank you all so much for having me. And again, if anybody needs me, please, um, send me an email, give me a call. I am literally always here to help and, um, whatever I can do to support the city of Boynton Beach, I really want to. Thank you so much.
Mayor, if I may, um, Board Member Whitfield, please stay. Do not walk away yet. Um, I just, I just wanna, first of all, just thank, um, you, Board Member Whitfield, for coming here today and not just kind of giving us the sugar-coated version of what's happening in our schools, but actually just really laying it out and, and really showing the members of the public what's happening. I'm sure parents who are experiencing it may see it. Um, but those who may not have children or those who are not really looking at the school district or have a vested interest or a personal interest may not see it. So I think first of all, that's, that's just so important. And I thank you for doing that, for just bringing it to the attention of, um, just individuals in the public because this has to be a concerted effort. Um, you know, the, the phrase, "it takes a village," is exactly what we need at this point in time in order to bring our students back. And, um, I would say three out of the five members of this commission sitting up here in its current, um, s- status are education, uh, and people who are in, in the education world. Um, and so I, I work with high schoolers and, and we see the deficits that they're experiencing. We see the difficulties that our seniors had this year just doing SATs and trying to apply to colleges. And all that is just, uh, it's been a, a toll. And I have my own kids who are in kindergarten, third grade, and just seeing how much they've had to overcome and, uh, come through. So our education system right now is in peril. I, I want to not understate the, the importance of how serious, um, education is, is, uh, i- i- under attack right now. Um, and, and we need all hands on deck. So anything that anyone can do, whether it, you know, some of the things that a Board Member Whitfield mentioned, I think are all vital. If it's just, you, you can mentor a student, do that. If it's that you can go into a classroom and help read, do that. Um, whatever it is that you can do, working with local nonprofits, working with the schools themselves, um, we, we really do need all hands on deck because right now, education, um, the public school system especially is just, um, you know, I think the situation is dire. And, and if, if there was a time to raise the alarm bells, and now is it. So I do wanna thank you, Board Member Whitfield, for all the work that you're doing to represent our communities and to fight for our students, um, to help them, um, as best as you can at this time. I commend you for your efforts and I ask that everyone join the charge, find what you can do and do it because we need it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Romulus. Well said. Thank you.
And with the, the commission, allow me to go, uh, do the proclamations and, and move up item to, uh, three G. Thank you. Proclamation, proclamation recognizing March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two as World Down Syndrome Day. Corinne Pike, Gold Coast Down Syndrome Organization Director of Development will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas March twenty-first is recognized as World Down Syndrome Day. Whereas Down Syndrome is a condition in which a child is born with an extra twenty-first chromosome. Whereas the twenty-first day of March, the third month of the year, was selected to signify the uniqueness of the triplication of the twenty-first chromosome which causes Down Syndrome. Whereas there are more than four hundred thousand people living with Down Syndrome in the United States. Whereas people with Down Syndrome attend schoolwork, participate in decisions that affect them and contribute to society in many wonderful ways. Whereas the Gold Coast Down Syndrome Organization impacts the lives of people with Down Syndrome by raising awareness and advocating for high expectations and acceptance of individuals with Down Syndrome. Whereas we believe individuals with Down Syndrome should have equal opportunity to achieve desired goals of the self-fulfillment, pride in their achievements, inclusion in their community, and reaching their fullest potential. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim March twenty-first as World Down Syndrome Day.
On behalf of the Gold Coast Down Syndrome Organization, um, we really want to express our gratitude to the city of Boynton Beach for your support and for highlighting World Down Syndrome Day. Thank you for the honor of the proclamation, Mayor Grant.
Oh, it's our pleasure and it was, uh, you know, so great to see Zach, you know, be on the world stage at, uh, the Oscars.
Oh, yeah.
Our next proclamation is for April first, two thousand twenty-two as the Lord's Place Sleep Out Homelessness Awareness Day. Calvin Phillips from the Lord's Place will receive the proclamation. City of Boynton, City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas homelessness is a serious social and economic issue impacting all levels of our society. The City of Boynton Beach and the Lord's Place recognize that all people deserve respect and a place to call home. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach and the Lord's Place are partners in providing that respect and pathway to brighter future for men, women, and families who are homeless in our community. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach extends its appreciation to the Lord's Place for its leadership on the, this critical social issue and its wide array of successful programs and searching and services changing the lives of the homeless one life at a time. And whereas the Lord's Place will hold its fifteenth annual sleep out to end homelessness on Friday, April first, through Saturday morning, April second, two thousand twenty-two, at the United Methodist Church of the Palm Beaches. The Lord's Place will host Sleep Out two thousand twenty-two both in person and a safe outdoor format and provide a virtual component for those who prefer to remain home to encourage everyone in the community to participate and sleep out at the event or in the homes or backyards. And whereas everyone from every walk of life is invited to participate in Sleep Out two thousand twenty-two to increase awareness of unhoused individuals and families and focus on the programs and services needed to break the cycle of homelessness. And whereas the mission of the Lord's Place is to break the cycle of homeless, homelessness by providing innovative, compassionate, and effective services to men, women, and children in our community. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim April first, two thousand twenty-two as the Lord's Place Sleep Out Homelessness Awareness Day.
Okay, uh, good evening. On behalf of Donna Stanley, the CEO of the Lord's Place, uh, we would like to say thank you and we appreciate this, uh, Mayor Stephen Grant and this, uh, Board of Commissioners for this proclamation. So thank you.
You're welcome. Our next proclamation is to proclaim the month of March as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month. Will Romulus from Digital Vibes Inc. will accept the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach takes, City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas the City of Boynton Beach takes special notice and acknowledges exceptional organizations that help residents who live, work, and play within the jurisdiction. And whereas in two thousand ten, Digital Vibes was founded to reach out to underserved youth in Palm Beach County by empowering them through dance, fitness, technology, and the arts. And whereas Digital Vibes partner with the Palm Healthcare, Palm Health Foundation, annual to host the Let's Move Commit to Change Physical Activity Challenge, a countywide initiative that focuses on physical activity, nutrition, and healthy behaviors. And whereas Digital Vibes Inc. and Palm Health Foundation presents the annual challenge, which takes place annually from March first to the thirty-first, encourages individuals within and beyond Palm Beach County to take charge of their health by participating in fun fitness exercises. And whereas the Let's Move Initiative was originally introduced on a national level by First Lady Michelle Obama in two thousand ten with the goal of decreasing childhood obesity throughout the United States due to the fact that nearly one in three children in the United States are overweight or obese. And if this problem persists, one-third of children born in two thousand or later will suffer from diabetes at some point in their lives or will face other obesity-related health problems such as heart disease, high blood pressure, asthma, and cancer. And whereas Digital Vibes and the Palm Health Foundation invite all residents to take the challenge to move by forming teams, registering online, committing to exercising for at least thirty minutes a day throughout the month of March, and logging their minutes on the Let's Move website, www dot letsmovpbc dot org. In two thousand twelve, Palm Beach County logged a hundred thousand minutes in the first year of the challenge. And we have met the challenge each year, rising in two thousand twenty-one to over fifty-nine million minutes logged. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, and hereby proclaim the month of March two thousand twenty-two as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month. In addition, I didn't see that we had this on the agenda, so I said that we needed to have, uh, this proclamation to, for March two thousand twenty-two as Women's History Month. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways and served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement and served courageously in the military. And whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life, of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and studying of American history. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of March two thousand twenty-two as Women's History Month. And if there's someone from the audience that would like to accept the proclamation. Yes, Cindy?
I just wanna say for all the women who have contributed, who've given birth, who fought the good fight, who stand for righteousness and truth, who are mama bears, those who don't have children, but you work with children, you love children, and that you contribute in your jobs and in your occupations and the things that you contribute to each and every other person that you encounter. I wanna thank you because we as women have not been honored in the way that we were today. And I wanna thank each and everyone for making a stand for freedom and to work together. And remember that we are women and united we stand together. So let's continue the fight, forge forward, and let's keep this Boynton Beach area a great place. And let's work together, not against each other. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last proclamation is to proclaim for runoff election to be held on March 22nd, 2022, between Marie Heaton and Thomas Turkin for Commissioner in District 3. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim that a runoff election will be held in the City of Boynton Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, on the 22nd day of March 2022 to elect the one commissioner from District 3 to serve a three-year term expiring in March 2025. The voting hours are between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM on said date. Polling places are hereby designated as follows. Precinct 3194, Boynton Beach Fire Station Number 2. Precinct 4026, Sterling Village. Precinct 4036, Forest Park Elementary. Precinct 4054 and 4062, Lakeview Baptist Church. Precinct 4066 and Precinct 4068 and Precinct 4070, Seacrest Presbyterian. Precinct 7186, Boynton Beach Senior Center. Precinct 7188, Forest Park Elementary. And also in Seacrest Presbyterian, Precinct 7190.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Are you done? I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I'm interrupting you.
No, I was just going to say I wish the best of luck to our two candidates for District 3 Commissioner.
Thank you. I just wanted to make an amendment to the agenda and ask for my discretionary fund items to be moved up ahead of public audience. I'm not sure how long public audience may be today and there are a few members in the public that would like to speak on those items. Can we move those up ahead, please?
All right, so I have a request to move up items 5C through 5I ahead of item 4.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And next announcement at the request of Commissioner Romulus, we recognize Bestegern Pierre, Community Standards Field Supervisor for his 25 years of service from February 6, 1997. Is he in the audience? Yes, Mr. Pierre. Thank you. Do we have something for him? We don't? All right, well, let me shake your hand then.
Mayor, I'll just speak as he returns to the dais and I want to congratulate Mr. Pierre for his 25 years of service to the city. He's been a strong advocate, especially in our department, Code Enforcement Department, or Community Standards as we call it now, to support our community and help guide them through some of the difficulties of our codes and policies. So I want to thank him and I know that there are several others who have had lots of time in serving the city. So I do request that city staff bring back what we've done in the past where we would commend and honor our employees who work so hard day in and day out and who have committed their life to being public servants of the City of Boynton Beach. So thank you for the opportunity to recognize Mr. Pierre. I know that we'll have something given to him at a later time. And again, I would request that city staff bring back, I believe that Lori and Julie are working on looking at that, but that's something that should be coming back to recognize our hardworking men and women within our employee database. Thank you.
Mr. Pierre?
Aye, yes. I want to thank you for the recognition, but I also want to thank you guys for the great job you do for the city moving forward. I know some of you leaving and congratulations, the new mayor, but I hope the next commission and the mayor can move the city forward. I've been working for the city 25 years, but I live here almost 35 years. So I see the change, but I recognize you guys for the change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus, a special thanks for you. The community loves you and they will be with you in your new journey. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes. Vice Mayor?
I also would like to congratulate Pierre for his 25 years of service there. I think I've known him just about all 25 of those years and we worked together on several projects. So congratulation to you. But I also would concur that we do have some others in the city with 25-plus years and the staff is putting that together and I'd like to have that, if you could, presented at our next commission meeting. Thank you. Congratulations again. Job well done.
All right. Next, we have Black History Month Celebration Presentation by Recreation Parks Director Casey Young to highlight the event and recognize the Community Volunteer Committee.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. I'm here tonight to recap the Black History Month Celebration that was held at Saracen's Park on February 26. The event featured art exhibits, which included a replica map of Old Boynton Beach, kids' activities that included bounce houses, face painting, and games to win prizes, local vendors that provided information on available resources, food trucks, and a variety of performances from gospel, jazz, praise dancing, and a cheer performance, all on the newly renovated performance stage at Saracen's Park. It was a family fun day for all. I would like to recognize Mary DeGraffenreich, Recreation Manager, for organizing an event committee of committed community members that worked for months to plan this event. At this time, I'd like to ask the mayor to help recognize the Black History Month Celebration Committee and thank them for their dedication by presenting them with a token of appreciation. You don't mind?
Yep.
If the community members that are present will come down as I call their names. Rita Simmons. Nikita Newton. Reverend Jim Bowie. Minister John Hepburn, I'm sorry. Yes, recognize them as they come forward, please. Thank you. Minister John Hepburn. Pastor Richard Daines. Tori Ora from Boynton Strong.
Good evening. Good evening. Gentlemen, he forgot to mention that we also have some Black History. We have a tent of Black History. So we'd like to, hopefully this will become an annual event. And we'd like to thank all those who were involved in helping us to put this together. And I want to keep this in your mind that Black History is not just for blacks. Black History, Black History is American history. Black History is intertwined with America. And blacks played a major part in all aspects of American history to make this great country livable for the way it is now. Whether it's fighting in the military, World War I, Korean War. The president, blacks were with George Washington, the first blacks to die in the Revolutionary War, Christopher Atticus. And Paul Revere went one way to alert the timid men that the British were coming. A black man also went the other way. So a lot of things were left out of American history and black was involved. The first heart transplant was by a black man. Blood transfusion that saved many, many, many lives in World War II. Andrew Drew, as well as the Flying 100s, Tuskegee Abols, Red Tails. They also fought valiantly in World War II and not one bomber, one airplane bomber was destroyed because of the Tuskegee Abols. And there's much, much, much more history. So hopefully, some of our other citizens from around the city will come out to this Black History Month event and learn some information about Black History. So I just want to remind you all, Black History is not just for blacks. Black History is also American history.
Thank you. Just a last thank you to everyone that attended the event and helped with the event. So without community support and support of the commission and city manager, this event wouldn't be possible. So just wanted to thank everybody for that.
Thank you. And maybe my last announcement for the city's 2021 Design Build Institute of America Project Award for the city hall and library facility as part of the Town Square project by city manager Lori Laveria.
Thank you, Mayor. And we're going to ask you to go stand down by the podium and we're going to invite Mark Heffron. And I don't know if Kelly wants to come up too, but if not, Mark Heffron is our master developer E2L Solutions that helped us build our Town Square redevelopment project. And I thought it was fitting and we must do it tonight before our sitting commission does step off. They were the group that sat through hours and hours of meetings and reading over contracts to move forward with our Town Square project. We received an award and I'm going to ask Mark to explain a little bit more about the Design Build Institute of America. But a couple of months ago, our assistant city manager was honored to attend the conference and receive what was national recognition for the design build concept of how this facility was built. It's a big deal and it's a big award. And I wanted this commission, just one, say thank you to you for moving forward on this project. And the awards down there, I can barely lift it up. I swear that thing's 30 pounds at least, but it's a heavy, beautiful award. And Mark, if you would just talk a minute about the significance of design build and what was unique about this, to share with the audience about what makes us special and how distinguished the award is.
Oh, thank you, Lori. Thank you, Mayor Grant, and to the entire commission. You gave us a chance and we set out with this project to win 10 awards or more. But I will tell you, this is by far the most prestigious award you can win. It is a nationwide competition, so all 50 states within the U.S. applied for this. We were one of three chosen. And as such, this is the highest award you can get from the Design Build Institute of America, which is really the highest ranking official site or certification for any kind of design build award in America. So with that, anything else I can share with you? I will tell you, I would be remiss in not mentioning that Haskell, who was our design builder, as well as Baker Barrios, our architect, I wish they were here along with everybody that was involved in designing and building this project because we would fill up this entire room and they'd be out in the hallway. It took hundreds of people to make this award happen.
I know, I think Chris Ware is on the line. If, Chris, I don't know if you want to say anything, John, if you would unmute him. But Chris was the project lead for Haskell, which is an international builder. They did an amazing job. We came in under budget with extra ability to do some of the things on our wish list that we otherwise couldn't do. And on time, under budget isn't often that that happened. So this made it even more special. And our goal was to go after as many awards as possible. And we've also received two awards for the adaptive reuse of the old high school. As many know, it sat for years and dilapidated, but same commission that voted on this project decided to save the building and we invested, it was about $12 million, into the rehabilitation of the high school across the street into what is now a beautiful 28,000-square-foot arts and cultural center that has been recognized by the Florida Historic Preservation Society for the actual historic preservation of the building. And we received an additional award from the American Institute of Architects for the adaptive reuse of that building, which means fix it up and make it something even better. And so we're on our way to winning our awards and very proud of the facility, both of these facilities, and as we continue to see the end of our Town Square project complete. So thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. And as I stated earlier, I have a prior obligation. So I will pass the gavel to the vice mayor. And we are on now, Commissioner Romulus's moved up items.
Okay, we'll now take up items 5C through I. Item 5C, approve the request for Commissioner Romulus to distribute 500 of her community's support funds for Growing Strong Ministries. Can we read through these? Please, can we read all of these and approve them at once?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's your prerogative, yes.
Okay. Is that okay with the rest of you?
Vice Mayor, it's fine with me. I just do have a few members of these organizations that are here, so I would like to give them an opportunity to speak once we approve the items.
Okay, okay. If there are any members from Growing Strong Ministries here, just come on up and...
Vice Mayor, did you want to run through and approve all of them and then let the speakers go?
And then we can...
Just so we don't go on?
Yes, that's what I'm requesting. Thank you.
Hold on just one second. We're going to have them read them all and then you'll come up individually after that, okay? Thank you. The second one is to approve the request for $1,000 to Mission Clinic, Palm Beach County. Item E is to approve $500 to the HATT Foundation. Item F is to approve 500 for the funds to Scholar Career Corporation. Item G is to approve $1,000 to United Way. And item H is to approve $500 to Pathway to Prosperity. And item I, the last item, will be $500 to the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Cadet Program. So if there's anyone from any of those, we will start with the first one. You can come at this time. So we asked the Growing Strong Ministry if you would come and make whatever comments you want to make.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ensign Alou Saint. I represent Growing Strong Ministry. We located here in Boynton Beach. Our goal is to ensure that families to be self-sufficient and independent. We have been discriminated since 2015. I would like to thank everyone that helped us doing all this year, help the people and this community. I would like to thank the mayor and especially the Commissioner Romulus. Thank you for everything. Thank you for our help and we appreciate them. May God bless.
God bless you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next, we have anyone from the... Next, we have anyone from the Mission Clinic of Palm Beach Springs Incorporated? Anyone from that organization here? If not, we'll move on to the next one. Is anyone from the Scholar Career Courtion here? May come at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on down to United Way. The $1,000 to United Way. Anyone from United Way here? Seeing none. The Pathway to Prosperity? Is there anyone even online? Seeing none. We're going down to Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Cadet Program.
Good evening.
I'm from the Palm Beach County Cadet Program, one of the lead advisors in the program. Just a little recognition about our program, so you have an idea what the funds are going towards. We have the largest cadet program in the state with over 200 members in our program. The age range between 14 and 18 years old. The yearly enrollment of new members continually every year, where they are put through an eight-week cadet program, basically setting the foundation for what the program is about. They have weekly training nights, learning firefighter EMS skills, and we also teach them good morals, ethics, and willingness to help others. They also have quarterly cadet competitions where they go throughout the state and compete in firefighter skills. Right now, they're actually on an annual spring break trip where our program goes and gives them a nice spring break. They do volunteer events, CPR events, teaching CPR through the community. They do St. Patrick's Day Parade marching, which is what we just did this past weekend. And they also do the 9/11 ceremony. Program teaches them leadership through their rank structure, and the program strives to mentor the youth for a career afterwards. We have a senior year fire academy prep training, which they get trained prior to going to fire academy. We also have a program that sets them in the right direction to become an EMT right after high school. Our program's success, since 2016, we've put 53 cadets have been hired as firefighters. Four cadets working in various hospitals as paramedics and three cadets since 2016 working as registered nurses as well in hospitals. With these funds, we'll be able to continue our mission, mentoring the youth and creating firefighters and paramedics to serve the community. Thank you from the cadet program.
Thank you, sir. And now, if I could, a congratulation to all those agencies receiving funding. If I could have a motion to approve all of 5C through I, I think that would be in order. Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, been moved in second. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses nay. Ayes have it in so order. Now we'll go back up to item four. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the commission for supporting the allocation of my funds, and I do want to recognize the individuals, especially from Growing Strong and Palm Beach County Fire Rescue who came today to speak. You know, these are all organizations that I strongly believe in, in the work that they're doing. And I wouldn't have been allocating my funds towards them if I didn't believe so. I wish I had more to give, but I hope that this is just a small token of what they do and the impact they have in this community and the future that they present for the students and the families and the lives that they touch on a daily basis. So thank you for your service to our community. And again, this is a small show of my appreciation to all of you for how you continue to make the city of Boynton Beach and the Palm Beach County as a whole better. Thank you very much.
Very good. We certainly cannot pay you for doing the service that you do for our community, but as Commissioner Romulus just stated, just a token of our appreciation to show you that we do recognize you. Now we'll move to item four. We have a public audience. So those who want to speak, you have three minutes, and we're here for your concerns and whatever questions. It is not a QA. So you may come forth and do so at that time. Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name, address for the records.
Bishop Bernard Wright, President of Bernard Wright Ministries. First, I'd like to commend all the mothers by the grace of God. Do we need mothers in these children's lives? And the children do deserve better. And let me say something about any father that is in a child life, I commend you, because 86% of our children in prison and jail were raised by a single mother. So now let me go on to say that. I'm going to reserve my congratulations to you, Mr. Pincirgo. I'm going to wait till the end of your tenure, because we need to see some action now. And promises just don't do it. See, you already fumbled the ball when there was $7 million to be distributed to organizations that came here the day after your election and you weren't there. We couldn't even get a quarter. So you got a strike against you there. Let me go on to say that right now, in your election, your first day, we're going to be asking that you move to have Mark Song fired, first and foremost. And then there'll be a particular meeting to have Lori resign or taken off, however we need to do that. Those are the two relevant issues during your first, you know, the beginning of your tenure here as mayor of this city. And again, I do not believe you're the right choice, but what I'm asking for, that you do the right thing for the people, because we are your employer. We have to look at this thing. You are our city commission. It is our tax dollars that paying your check. And so today in District 2, we're going to be looking for change for the better for the people, which is my platform and no other agenda. The agenda is a black agenda, which is a human agenda, because it's about civil rights, equal justice. We're talking about race, justice, and equality, especially for SJ. Let's get this taken care of first and foremost. Let's not continue to do what you're doing, keeping doors on disestablishment to keep this machinery going at the expense of our lives over in District 2, which affects whole Boynton. So for it to be a one Boynton, we're going to expect you not to do us no favors, but just what is right for the people, and that's our command to you, to God be the glory.
Dr. Snyder, if you would state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Carrie Snyder, 630 Riviera Drive, Boynton Beach. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. I'll be very brief. It's about the building, which was passed last week. Just one point in the development order, it's coming around, copies for each of the commissioners on number 28. All along in the process, we had language. If you look at the next page, we met with the dentist developer and the planner on February 10th, and it was agreed upon that the building would be closed on Sunday, if you look at page two, number two. And somehow that became silent in the motion two weeks ago. And I wanted to request to see if it would be possible that this be reconsidered, to simply add that the building is closed to all uses on Sundays. It's silent regarding Sunday, and I wasn't sure if Sunday meant it was okay or it wasn't okay. So that's what I have, and that would make it congruent with the hours that Colonial Center is open next door, the office complex. It is closed on Saturday and Sunday. We had originally asked that of this building, but we agreed on February 10th with the dentist and the developer planner that it would be okay Sunday. But then somehow that language fell off. There was some conversation at the end of the agenda item two weeks ago, and I'm just making the request that it could be reconsidered. I wrote it in there in red on number 28. And you can look again at the next page where it indicates what was agreed upon and presented here on February 25th. That's all I have. I'm not sure what the process is, but...
Okay, thank you, Dr. Snyder. Are there any comments from the commission?
Mayor, all I'll add to this is that I think it's a simple matter that Dr. Snyder is requesting just to clarify this miscommunication. This is not asking for the item to be rehashed or asking for the applicant to do anything further other than to just make a very clear distinction that the office would not be in operations on Sundays. I think that's a fair ask from the residents of this community. Unfortunately, because I was on the opposing side of this issue, I cannot bring this up. But I do believe you, Vice Mayor, have the ability to bring the item up for reconsideration just to add in that language, to make sure that it's very clear, so that we can give the residents that live in this area some peace of mind. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kess, your cadet or comment?
We have no authority to require additional requirements after a vote has taken place. The meeting that was referenced was the first of two meetings where residents demanded an additional change vis a vis the parking. When that change came back, that changed the use of the project to lower the parking on the street. And in doing so, the developer was not bound by agreements for the previous iteration of the project. So at this time, we have no authority to force a private property owner not to operate a lawful business on a Sunday. Those are my comments.
I would ask, legal, would you concur?
Well, you're talking about two different concepts here. If you're going to reconsider a decision, there's a process for doing that. But when you reconsider, you're going to, the only thing you're doing tonight is doing a motion reconsider, and you're placing it on the next agenda, and you're reopening the public hearing on that item. That's the reconsideration, and that would have to be done this evening under the quasi judicial procedures. If you're talking about getting with the applicant and seeing if they'll agree to different terms, that's a completely voluntary issue. There's no legal compulsion on them to make any changes once it's been approved by this commission. And the third thing is, if there are rules and regulations that allow them to operate, if you prohibit those types of things, there are some concerns about statutes and extractions and things like that that we don't want to get into. So if it's a business that can legally operate on certain days and certain hours, that's something that we need to be careful of changing those when it's provided for in the code already.
Okay, I don't have a problem with the request. I just want to make sure that legally, we're doing it the right way. So what I hear you saying is that me being on the prevailing side could bring it back up for reconsideration and make that request tonight for the next meeting or something.
That's correct. You could do a motion for reconsideration, and then that would be all you do tonight, and it would be set up and renoticed to the next available agenda to have the quasi judicial hearing reconvene.
We can make that, I can make that, well, we can have that motion made, and we'll vote either up or down for the next meeting.
That's correct.
Commissioner Pincirgo, do you have an opinion on this?
Yes, you know, I support the idea, but I would recommend that before we go to step 20, we take step two or three. And really, if this is a clarification in the hours, my first recommendation is that, you know, these parties speak directly first, in addition to staff, if that's something that can be handled privately. If it still cannot be, then I would be open to proceeding down this road of a reconsideration. But my common sense tells me, let's take smaller steps before we get to step 20.
I just want to clarify that the code would require, in order to reconsider, that has to be the next meeting after the approval. So if you are going to, you can do a motion to reconsider. It doesn't prohibit an engagement and conversation between now and then, you know, I guess with the city staff, but doesn't make aware of the issue. But it would have to come, if you want to bring it back before you to discuss that, and in a quasi judicial setting, you have to do a motion this evening under your code.
Seeing no immediate urgency, this building isn't being built tomorrow. I'm okay with giving it some time, and then if it really needs it, then it will enter that phase.
Is that a motion?
No, that is not a motion. What I'm saying is, I want them to have the opportunity to work it out privately before we have a motion to reconsider.
What I hear the attorney telling us is that we're going to back for reconsideration. It has to be done tonight, which is the following meeting after which we voted on it. Is that correct?
Yes.
The code reads, "The city commission reconsider's decision arising from a quasi judicial proceeding only upon a motion to reconsider made at the meeting in which the decision was rendered or during the next regular city commission meeting," which is this evening.
And for the sake of clarification, Dr. Snyder, can you clarify if a conversation has been had, or can any members of staff clarify if any conversations have been had with the applicant regarding this matter and what has been the response?
I spoke with the planner on last Monday, not yesterday. Today's Tuesday, and he agreed that it was vague. I didn't ask him, do you adamantly oppose if we reinstate that or not? I mean, I'd be more than happy to speak with him as soon as I could get a hold of him, but I understand that this motion to reconsider, according to the code, has to be acted on tonight. But we would, that's part of the process, and speaking with Mr. Rump, that we would speak, and Mr. Rump would probably speak with him and try to work it out. But it has to be, if it's going to be reconsidered, that motion would have to be either voted up or down tonight, according to the language in your code or regulations, or whatever they are called, legislation. So does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. So basically, it's still vague in both senses.
Yes.
Yeah, the language itself, and the motion was vague, and now the process of whether, you know, the conversation has been had or not is vague. So what I would simply just ask is if the city attorney can clarify, if we do make a motion and to bring this item up for reconsideration, and prior to our next commission meeting, a conversation has been had between the applicant and the residents, and they've been able to come to a mutual agreement, can we then just remove the table or remove the item from consideration at the next commission meeting if it's already been resolved?
My thought would be that once you do a motion for reconsideration, the code requires it to be noticed, same way the original item was noticed. So it would be a quasi judicial item that would have to be resolved at the next city commission meeting. Now, it could come in resolved and make that hearing more straightforward than, you know, a contentious quasi judicial hearing. But once you set the ball motion with the motion reconsideration, the code requires it to be noticed and to be brought back and agendized at the next meeting as a, in that same format.
I'm well aware of that. I understand that it would be on the agenda, it would be noticed. I'm saying at the time that we would be going through the start of the agenda, if the problem has already been resolved, can it be at that time either removed from the agenda if it's already been resolved, being that we don't have to go through all the entire motions of a public hearing, since this is just a minor issue that needs to be addressed?
I apologize if I misunderstood your question, but the fact that it is noticed would provide an opportunity or a right for other folks who received that notice to speak on the item. So I think you would have to call the item at the very least and open it up to see if there's any need to put anything on the record at that time.
Understood.
Okay, who, are you, were you on the prevailing side? Well, now, here's the $64,000 question. I'm Vice Mayor. I want to make that motion. So I'd pass it to one of my colleagues?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I do make the motion that we reconsider this and on the contingency of the residents talking with our staff to get it resolved. And as Commissioner Romulus just stated, if it is resolved, we take action to whatever legal we can remove it or whatever at our next meeting. Does that make sense?
Well, it's just a motion to reconsider.
Yes, a motion to reconsider.
Is there a second?
Second.
Gotcha. All right. So I didn't expect to be up here, but here we are, reconsidering an item that was voted on in two previous meetings. But I would caution on this vote, because what is being asked can be asked informally, because we are not within the law to overturn our decision and then deny the property, which is in code, in zone, and in compliance, because they may not agree to shut down on a Sunday.
because they may not agree to shut down on a Sunday. I agree with, with previous statements that were made by Commissioner Penzerga, that there are some steps in between. I understand the desire to reconsider it, because technically, I guess this is the only meaning to do it, but I am not in favor of this, because if it is reconsidered, if it comes back up, and the approval is rescinded, we will be in violation of the law. We will violate the property rights of the property owner. And I don't, I will not subscribe to a position that creates a scenario where we could violate the law and be sued. The building would get built anyway, and we would be sued for damages pursuant to any delay in the process. We've seen it happen before. I, I sympathize with the residents. The building is within code, within zoning, and complies with all of our rules and regulations. If we want to ask, as a commission, the developer to consider that caveat, so be it. But formally, we can't demand it of them, and we can't legally rescind their approval when they're within code. So that, that's my piece on that. I, I will not support this, even though, again, I sympathize, I understand the, the residents' thoughts, but I haven't violated the law or ordinances since I've been up here for six years, and I don't plan to create a scenario where someone else could do it pursuant to my vote tonight.
If, if I may, this is, is not a command, s- s- request, and I don't see it that way, if it, when it comes back. I'm not going to vote it down because it's not there. If it's not there, it's not there, because it was written in there before. It was just an oversight, as I understand it. This is why I asked legal to chime in, to make sure that I could go down this road. Okay, so when it comes back, if, if they can't work it out from, between the residents and our staff, then so be it. We, I'll just vote the same way I've, I voted before, and it won't be there. So I, I don't, I don't believe we're in violation at this point with, with what is being asked. It's, it's just a matter of, will, will staff put that statement in there or not?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I want to echo what you just said. You know, I appreciate my colleague, Commissioner Katz, for thinking of worst case scenario, and, and of course, that's always important. But again, what, what Commissioner Hay just mentioned is exactly the case. The residents are, are very clear that this project is here, and it's here to stay. It has already been approved. This scenario is not meant to be another stab at trying to take it down, as I don't think any of the residents intended to do for this project. It's not that they didn't want development, they just wanted it to be properly done and for their concerns to be heard. And this is just one thing that, for whatever reason, wasn't clearly stated when it was discussed at our last commission meeting, and we need to clarify that, so that at least there's some peace of mind. So I may not be here for that vote, but knowing that this item has already been approved, this item will most likely, again, be approved. So to dispel your, your concerns, Commissioner Katz, you know, that, that's not the intention of the residents who are requesting this amendment at all. It's simply to correct what is vague and isn't clearly being stated. We don't want situations happening that are out of the control and that are not clearly written, and that way staff cannot enforce because they were not written down. So, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Commissioner Penzerga in here?
Aye.
Raise three to one to reconsider.
Thank you. We'll move on. We're still on public comments. I think I saw you come up first.
Yes. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Stephanie Hayden, DMO. I reside at 2181 Southwest 15th Avenue, condo N102, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426. I'm going to first start by saying, oh my gosh, this is my first in-person meeting, standing here, talking to you guys after the election that I lost, 2019, right? And I literally, I have to pinch myself, because we're having the same conversations about people not having clear vision or not hearing things properly, right? So the attorney that I'm usually used to seeing is not here, but you're here, right? And then the person that I'm used to seeing is not here, because she abruptly left the room, and I thought maybe the banter that you guys had going back and forth, then she would come back in the room, because I specifically wanted to direct my statements to the entire diocese, but specifically to her and the attorney, but they're not here. So I am going to make sure I stay focused, because we have a minute and something else to go. I am asking again, as I did before the requests, to have the city manager be given a no confidence vote, also with the city attorney, a no confidence vote. And just like the attorney here, sitting in the place, made a motion to reconsider, I, I am making a public plea as a citizen of Boynton Beach, as a former quasi, wanted to run for mayor, ran for mayor, came third, resident, business owner. I am asking the city to reconsider and pull in the contract for the city commission, excuse me, the attorney and the city manager. They should not be, being in these meetings, giving any advice, any leadership, because clearly, it's lacking, right? There's a perfect example you just had just now, right? Something that you guys already approved, right? You're now coming back to say you have to bring it back because some oversight. So that's a lot of oversight that you all have for over so many years, right? You have oversight on policies that you're not completing, going through with. And so we, we clearly can't have staff that don't know how to advise the community and those that sit on the diocese to make decisions that can affect the residents of Boynton Beach. Clearly, you just showed that in an, in an example, right? Thank you again for your time, and I will defer my time to the next speaker. Thank you.
Sir, if you would state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is John Danes, Post Office, Box 713, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426. Before I go any further with public comments, I just want to do acknowledge Mr. Penzerga and congratulate him on winning. I know you and your campaign worked pretty hard, so congratulations again. But my issue is, Reverend Hay is a marksman. He's a, a young man that worked 20 years for this city. And in his 20 years as a police officer, he had 10 reprimands. That's every two years, he's, has a reprimand. He's suspended four times in 20 years. So that means every five years, he's suspended one time. He was involved in three chases, right, involving three deaths, right? He also pulled over his captain, right? He was also reprimanded for not being in briefing, not paying attention, right? Reverend Hay, in my 33-year career in local government, I have never seen a file this terrible. He should have never been hired by this city. He should have been terminated before he made his probation. He should have never made probation. With two reprimands in a one-year probationary period, I've never seen that in my 33-year career, ever, ever. And I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say this, right? This city, right, this municipality is number one in the county in lawsuits. You've been sued since the 80s, since the 80s. I'm surprised you even have money in your reserves. It's ridiculous. It's just ridiculous. And I'm, I'm gonna say this here, and I'm gonna get our public comments over to Thompson or the Davis family, whoever wants to speak. Could you do me a favor, Reverend Hay? Right? Can you get this message to Mark Zone, right? Because obviously, he loves his job. He makes $100,000 a year. He's a field training officer. I understand, right, how the game goes. That's why I refer to it as polit- tricks and not politics. I ain't survived 33 years by not understanding how the game works. So just give him this message here. I wish he was here, I would give it to him personally. And I understand, he, you know, he loves his job. I understand that, right? But to just tell him, Reverend Hay, right, job, his job, J O B, just tell him, right, just remove the J and put a G there. You don't have to touch the O, leave it there. And B, if you flip a B over, it becomes a D, guard. So if he want to chase behind somebody, let him chase behind guard. He don't have to go 97 miles an hour to keep up with him. He can pace himself. And when he paces himself and catch up with him, he needs to actually, to clean, to, to create him a clean heart. Because obviously, right now, his heart is filthy.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Please, please, please. We, one of the things we're gonna have in, in this, officer, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you remove if you continue. If you continue.
Sorry, I'm in the middle of something here, at the meeting.
We will have order. Minister Wright, if you continue, we'll have you remove also.
Thank you.
Outburst, and you're gone. Minister Wright?
Been asked to leave the chamber. Please do peacefully.
Please remove. We apologize for the disturbances, sir. If you would, Minister Wright, one more outburst, and you'll be removed also. Remove Minister Wright, the one with the hat on. Please, please remove Minister Wright. Minister Wright? Have a good night. Again, I apologize for the disturbances. We will have order. Yes, sir. Will you state your name and your address for the record?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Peter Toroxik. I'm the operator of the Boynton Beach Golf Course and Snack Bar. We were here two weeks ago, when the city attorney promised he will deliver a review for you regarding this misrepresentation of the disqualification. He did not. I didn't hear, I was here, I'm listening, he did not. So almost a month waiting for correct public record supply regarding those disRFP, we didn't get it. That's why we had no choice today. We had to go to the court and ask him to involvement. The court gave to the city 10 days' notice to answering. So we waiting for this answer. Mr. Cherof, we have to answer where he disqualified us. So another question, the, the agenda item, C and D, was removed. What does it mean? Tabled?
They've been tabled.
What do you mean?
They've been tabled to the next agenda. They will not be discussed tonight. They will be brought back at the next agenda.
Next agenda. And, okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cindy Valco de Carrero, I live at 316 Northwest First Avenue. I have a question in regards to the voting. On the last election on March the 8th, Fire Station Number Three pulled all their polling signs off of the street at 6:22 PM. I wonder if that's going to happen again when it comes time to voting in this other special election on March the 22nd. Also, there were some candidates that were allowed to stay inside of the places to vote for over an hour, wearing their T-shirts. Is this activity is going to still be allowed to persist at the next voting? There were also other candidates standing within 10 to 15 feet from the door to voting, when they were supposed to be 150 feet away. I just want to know if this behavior is going to be allowed again at this next voting. I really would like to see a clean, honest voting precinct, and that people abide by what other people abide by, as the statutes and the rules, when it comes to being at these polling places. I'm quite concerned, that was a half an hour, over a half an hour, for people to vote in the firehouse number three, over there off a minor road, and Congress. It's very disconcerting that the only thing that a person gets is a little reprimand. That's not okay. Most people that I know work all day, and that's the hour in which they would come to vote. That wasn't fair. It wasn't correct, and it was pretty much illegal. And again, as I stated, other candidates were inside with their T-shirts on for over an hour and a half, when they were supposed to be in there, just to vote and leave. So there's, I just want to make sure that this next time on March 22nd, these things will not transpire, and you might not have known about it, so I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, but I'm letting you know, these things are happening at the booths, at the voting polls. And people are, some people are being put away the 150 feet, while other people are allowed to stay. It's not right. It's going to be fair. We have to have fair voting. We have to have integrity in our voting polls, besides the fact that other people do different things when it comes to when the ballots are turned in. But we have to have integrity, and it has to be done correctly. So I would like you to know what, or to know, I'm asking, is it going to be fair this time on March the 22nd? Will there be people watching to make sure that the polls don't take their polling signs away, the polling signs away, where it says "Vote here," where people will know to vote, and there won't be that shenanigans going on inside of the voting polls? I ask you, Mr. Woodrow.
You have 48 seconds to, to finish. Are you, are you done?
I'm done, so I can hear your answer. Yes, thank you.
Uh, this is not a Q and A. We appreciate your input and your question and concern. It will be turned over to staff, and they will be, be getting back with you.
I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Vice Mayor, we have four hands raised in the virtual audience.
We have four, okay. Go ahead, and John, and we do have one more here. John, let us do that one, and then we'll go to online, okay?
Yes.
Please state your, your name and address for the record.
Lola Torreci, good evening. Two weeks ago, we already talked. We specifically asked if the city attorney and the city manager and Ms. Pinto, the purchasing manager, is here, so they can respond to your questions. Out of the three, we got zero. I just prepared you something. On the first page, you see question 24, they asking about if the proposer has any lawsuit. We said no, because Ultimate Bakery and Pasty has no lawsuit in the last five years. If you look at question 26, it has, has the proposer or its principals has any lawsuit. For this one, we have to look for the company and its principal. So the disqualification was absolutely incorrect, because question 24 is not asking for the principals lawsuit. If you go on page five, I prepared a summary for you, based on the proposal I read from us and from the other company. The difference is so huge. The public interest is not for you to award a contract to a company who has no background check, who has no government-related work. They not small business owners. They are not local. They don't have seven years' relationship with the city. We do. And they didn't add a financial information in their proposals. They are from Minnesota. They have businesses there. They have another business in West Palm Beach, and they only here to make extra income. Our, our company is a family business, and they have, they have, they have Texas driver license, and they have Minnesota businesses. The, the reason Ms. Pinto disqualified us are so small, and it's not correct, not legal. We don't understand why she was going for this length to get us out. We don't understand why she was going for this length to get us out. And after, we already gave these, all of this information to the city attorney, city manager, and her, no one withdraw the disqualification. And per your city policy, you can. The city manager has the right to withdraw disqualification. We do not want to do a big protest, because if we disqualified, we do not have the basis to do a big protest. And the city attorney was trying to make us do that. But if we disqualified, we can do a big protest. As far as I understand with my brain, I'm not an attorney, but you have to withdraw the disqualification. And whatever, the city attorney is not here, whatever they prepare for you, I, I would like you to look at the summary I gave you, it's just so basic, and I prepared it as I would
Thank you.
for anyone. Thank you.
One question, did you give a copy of this to our clerk, for our staff, review? Do you have one?
Yes, I have a copy.
Okay, good. What we'll do is, is, your comments are well taken, okay? Again, we'll turn it over to our staff, they will review it and give a response back to you, okay?
Okay. And sometimes I just want to get an email back, yes, I got it, we work on it, because otherwise I'm freaking out and we sending emails, and I don't want to send emails, I don't want to call the clerk and come to the city hall. I, I don't feel comfortable doing that.
We, we hear your concerns. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Bryce Graham, Second Vice President, National Network Center Florida Chapter. We've been coming here for seventy-nine days. Catch that. Lord, with two months. And you all refuse, absolutely refuse to hear the cry of this community. And it is basic, it is a basic cry. You have the record. You see the record of this officer, Mark Stone. You all were here, most of you, while he was doing his foolery in this community. I had a brief conversation couple of minutes ago with the city attorney, and she told me, oh, I knew the record before it came out in the post. Well, if you knew the record, damn it, why didn't you fire? So now we've come to this point where he's taken yet another life. And this family is suffering because we haven't gotten the basic yet. And that is to fire him. You all won't even give us the decency enough to fire him, this community. You all are doing a disservice by not letting him go. What is it that he's holding over your heads? Each and every one of you, this chief, that you all won't let him go. What you are seeing here tonight is a community that is tired and fed up with all of the crap that is going on in this city. And I call it crap because we see what you're doing. We know what you're doing. So tonight, we're calling on you to fire this officer, lest we're gonna get unruly in this city, and I'm not playing.
Thank you for your comments. Next, do we have anyone else from the audience? Come right up. Give us your name and your address for the record.
S J, eight-hundred block of North Federal Highway. I just want to state the obvious tonight. Commissioner Romelis, when she made the referral to move and change audience speaking to bring forth the other agenda, stating that she doesn't know how long publics, audience can somewhat last. I just want to say, our time is valuable as well. We had to sit here the last meeting, then leave to two A M. So for her to want to change it today and push us back again because she had her entourage here, to me, that's a slap in our face as if our time isn't valuable, which most times, there's only about twenty speakers from the public, and we only get three minutes, so that's roughly an hour, maybe two pushing it. And what I do want to say is, when you first started, you said it was no Q and A, we were just supposed to speak, but yet you've already shown that you're willing to answer and address certain people on certain issues, because when Dr. Snyder came up here, you guys were answering everything that it was she was asking, yet other people are out here speaking, making questions, comments. You choose not to answer anything. So if you're gonna make a statement and says there's no Q and A, that's what it should be. Don't pick and choose what you want to answer and respond to as if some people's issues and concerns are better than others. Good night.
Thank you. Is that anyone else, yes, yes, sir. Record?
This Dave Beasley, I live at one-ninety South Boulevard. Most of you have seen me before about the building department. I've been here for forty-two years in Boynton. I'll be seventy-three years old pretty soon. And we've had discussions about trying to streamline some of the things in the building department, some of the problems they have. I brought up something and suggested a workshop meeting. I was told we're gonna have a workshop meeting. We tried to have one, I went there, and Mr. Koontzman and another gentleman, and I brought five contractors with me. It was not a workshop meeting, it was a class on your E permitting process. I tried to bring up a couple of things and was cut off. So every time I tried to do anything to streamline or whatever, I'm hitting a brick wall. I talked to Andrew Mack, he's the only one that's listened to me at all, but still, I didn't get anything. I don't know what to do. I, I've, I've done work all over the county for forty-two years. I've been working in Hunter's Run for thirty-five years with the same three contractors. And as of right now, I'm gonna quit working in Boynton. I can't do it, I don't want to fight the building department every day. When I can go do a six-thousand-square-foot renovation of a house in North Palm Beach, I get no comments. Got a permit, started work. Did a house in the county, it's under construction now, there were no comments. I can do a shower in Hunter's Run and get two pages of comments. I just don't get it. So therefore, right now, I'm gonna quit working in Boynton. I have plenty of work in other places. I understand that the, Boynton may have an approved list of who they like to use and who they don't. And I think I'm on the list that they don't. Because Mr. Koontzman personally has a problem with me, and I kind of have a problem with him. He, he informed one of my contractors, I want to get this right, in an email, he said to one of my clients, Scott, you and I need to have a discussion on the quality of plans being submitted. That's a shot on me from the building department to one of my clients. That's a problem. That's a big problem for me. So with that, I quit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no more from the audience, John, would you, wait a minute, hold on, we have one more. Come on.
Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor. I don't want to just move on from that item. Can staff just provide some information at the next meeting in regards to what's happening? This has been an ongoing issue. I know we've implemented software to make things better, to help with permitting. And clearly, this issue is ongoing, and it's not just the speaker who just spoke previously, but it's, it's so many others who are in the development community who have expressed their issues with our development department. We've spoken on this time and time again. I, I don't know how we resolve this, because this seems to, I don't know if it's personality issues, I don't know if we need to fire some individuals within the developed, development department, if we need to bring in other people. What needs to happen? I, I would like to hear from staff on this, not tonight, this is not what's relevant to the topic of conversation tonight. But I do want to report back from staff regarding this, thank you.
Thank you. Stanley?
I want to wait to everybody paying attention.
Wait till everybody come back in?
I'll pay attention, we were conferring on some.
Oh.
Apologize.
Pernell Davis. Good question. Well, first and foremost, I'd like to congratulate the winners of last week's election. Miss Inka Serga and also Miss Angela Cruz. We appreciate both of y'all, we definitely look forward to working, working with you guys. And also, from looking at the numbers, it was like a, almost a record turnout in voting this, this election. And I feel like for all those people that came out and voted and showed the community that they were gonna stand up and try to make their voice heard, for the two that did win the election to not get sworn in the night is very disappointing. Because we have people that help, help these individuals. We have people in the community that went out and did extra things, helping individuals get in, and to have to wait, that's another problem. And also, on the night that they should be sworn in, it's like a ghost town in here. It's almost like it's not important to the city that these two individuals that worked so hard, I mean, all of y'all campaigned, besides paid employees, everybody that's elected up there, you campaigned, and you know how hard it is and how tedious and how much of a journey it is to actually have a campaign and win a campaign and then have to come here and not even get ahead, to have to wait. That's very unfortunate. I think you owe it to the people, for the people that did vote for these individuals on the next meeting, which is normally the case, but this is not a Q and A, but am I right or wrong?
Commissioner.
Just to clarify, until the Supervisor of Elections of Palm Beach County furnishes us with the certified election results, they legally can't be sworn in. The city's been notified that oversee military absentee ballots have until Friday to be counted, and at such time, they will certify hopefully on Monday, which means that they could be sworn in as soon as possible.
And, and how did we know that? Was that literature sent out to all the people that went to vote?
Supervisor of Elections explanation for not having it to us tonight.
I understand, it's just a problem with always leaving out information. It's a problem with when we get here, it's always something that, oh, we was about, oh, the community meeting, oh, we changed it to a new location. Oh, we can't do it because the insurance said we can't do it. It's always a surprise every time. You want to fire somebody for giving problems getting buildings developed, but you won't fire your officer that got a two-mile rap sheet? Think about it. We motioned to fire somebody in planning and development for not letting somebody work in Boynton Beach, which he actually works, but get complaints. But we, nobody up there's motioned to fire the officer that was involved in this incident. Not one single person. But we motioned to fire the development team. And y'all just bragging about how nice this building was, so somebody in development is doing something. We got a whole thirty-pound trophy over here. That's crazy.
Thank you. Thank you. Before, sir?
If I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner Romulus.
I, I just want to address Mr. Davis's comments. My, my comments are that our development department, and, and you don't need to come up to the podium, sir, this is not a, a back and forth, I'm simply just responding to what
Rebuttal, so I should get a chance to rebuttal after you.
No, that's not how this works. Thank you.
Then, because we don't want to hear you talk then.
Let me explain a few things.
You can talk and I can't?
As I stated before, this is not a Q and A. Who, who, who said that? Was that Bernard Wright again? Okay, let me, let me explain this. The commissioners have the option to respond if they, if they choose to, okay? But still, this is not a Q and A. But if they want to respond for clarification or whatever, they can do that, all right? Now
I can rebuttal the comment as well.
No, you cannot, sir, this is not how this works.
Now let me
Well, it's gonna work like that tonight.
No, no, no.
Don't like to choose and make policies. It's gonna work like that tonight.
Please. Okay, Pernell, please.
I, I'm, I'm trying, but you can't tell me you're gonna say something about what I said, and then I just gotta go sit down. I'm not, it's not gonna work like that.
You would notice that Minister Wright and the other young lady are back in here, okay? Because they asked to come in. And I said, okay, but we will have order.
That has nothing to do with me.
Thing decently and in order.
Understandable, but that has nothing to do with me. What they did or how they got put out.
No, no, please. Now, at this point, it is the option of the chair to permit what you're saying. And I'm gonna do that this time, okay? Now, after that, if, if, if we don't have a, a, a comment, I'm gonna ask the commissioners, just listen to the concerns and take it in and deal with it. Pernell, you have the floor.
I want to rebuttal to whatever she finna say.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I didn't hear what she said, I didn't hear what she said yet.
Well, how can you rebuttal if you didn't hear what you said?
I'm saying I'm gonna wait to hear her.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Romulus, what, did, did you make a statement against what Stanley was saying? I mean, not Stanley, Pernell?
I, I would like to, and I just want to make sure that it's understood that the proper protocol for how this chamber works is as a commission member, as a member who sits up there on a dais, we have been elected to sit here and speak and talk and say what we need to say. Members of the public who come up, they can speak for three minutes, and then they can take their seat. Regardless of how you feel or how you may disagree with what I'm saying, this is not a opportunity for you to back and forth with me. This is not the Senate floor, this is not the House floor, this is not a debate, this is not a, a, an argument. This is simply just me clarifying my statement because you're taking it out of context, and I would like to make sure it's clear. So, that being said, when I said what I said, we have had for numerous years, I've sat up here for six years, individuals who've been trying to fix their homes, individuals who've been trying to fix their roofs, individuals who've had general contractors who do business in the city. We've had numerous times developers of big and small sizes who've complained numerous times about our city and how they work and how we can't get things through and we can't get things done. This is a matter of frustration for me and other members who sit here on this board, and that's why I said my statement. So that being said, I am not afraid to take action against any member of our city staff because it is a job that they are doing. And I've said it on multiple occasions to you personally, Mr. Davis, and to other individuals, if I had my way, Mark Stone would be gone today. But because of the way that the, the investigation has to occur, we have to let the due process occur. And when that happens, he will, the proper incriminator action will be taken. I understand that that's not what you want to hear, I understand that that's not what the members who are here, who are asking for the actions to be taken, want to hear. But unfortunately, there's nothing I can do, there's nothing the rest of the staff members or board members up here can do. That may not make you happy, I'm not here to make you happy, I apologize. But what I can do is give you my word that if I had the opportunity, when the investigation ended, I would have been glad to do what you're asking. Unfortunately, I cannot. So whoever replaces me, when that time comes, I hope that they will be bold enough to follow and see what the actions of the investigation present and take action at that time. Those are my comments, those are my words. I just want to make sure that it's clearly stated, because for so long, we've been accused of standing here and not doing anything. Again, if I had the power, the authority at this point in time, right now, to do something, I would. But we have to let the process play itself out, we have to let the investigation occur. Other than that, that is all that I can say at this time. Thank you.
We, we're not gonna have those outbursts, whoever that is. I told you once before, we're gonna do things decently and in order, okay? Now, I can permit the speaker to speak on this and comment, but that's not the norm. But I have that authority. Mr. Pernell?
All right, Commissioner Romulus, I do appreciate your sentiments and your, your All right, Commissioner Romulus, I do appreciate your sentiments and your, your comments, but like you said, you sat here and you've heard year after year, people have situations. Well, if you look at his record, year after year, he's had situations and people have had complaints and nothing has happened.
Okay.
We, now you gave me three minutes.
Uh, okay, go. I thought that you were finished. Go ahead.
We read the report. He got more of an suspension for not paying attention in roll call than an incident involving somebody's death. Think about that. Sixteen hours, fifty-seven hours. Got suspended and had the option to say, you know what, I'm just gonna use that suspension day for my birthday and spend time with my family. Come on, man. And we, like you said, we don't have the power to fire him right now, even if it's not about this incident. Look at what he's done in the past. He don't deserve to be an officer. Every officer should be ashamed to be working in the same city as him. The, some of these officers take their job seriously and want to protect and serve the community. But when you see an officer's not doing it, we should point it out. We as the officials, we as the citizens, we make complaints, nothing happened. That's a problem and it needs to be addressed. Nobody want to address it. So when we come up and talk, you see the frustration, you get mad and then you want to say, oh, we're gonna kick you out of here. Okay, cool. People are tired. People are fed up. And then when you start getting stuff like this happening in the community and stuff get out of control, then we'll have another problem, right? And that's the problem that none of us want to have. All of us are taxpayers. All of us go to work. We do what we supposed to do in this society, but the society ain't giving it back to us. So you treat us any kind of way, what make you think we're gonna keep being treated like this? That's ridiculous. For her to say that, somebody's coming complaining over and over and over, why wait six years to change something then? This is your last day here. And now you motion and you want to know what happened when you gone. Why they gotta send a report to you? You gone. This is ridiculous. This, it's ridiculous that this whole commission, that the city manager leaves and then the mayor leaves. And these people don't get sworn in because the supervisor of election. The numbers are staggering. It was a blowout. He won and she won. Who, how many more people we gonna find? But we need FAU to come back again and find some more people? It's ridiculous, man.
Sir, do you care to speak? Name and address for the record.
Ernest McNally, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street, Unit four oh seven, Boynton Beach, also known as Harbor Hall Inlet One. I've lived there since, uh, November of twenty twenty. Uh, I'd like to say that District Four, Mr. Saga, District Two, the Vice Mayor, I follow all the crime code violations, everything going on in all these homes. And I come to the community standards trials on tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. And if you want to hear what goes on in this city, what's allowed, it's frightening. And District Two, you should be investigated. One thirty-two Northeast Twelfth Avenue, you want to come and listen to that case? And that's yours. And, and I, I'm sorry, that's yours. You, you have all the ones in my building with all the domestic violence. You have the one where, uh, uh, the child was, uh, uh, illegal chase. And, and then we come here and your lawyer says, oh, everybody in the city, don't comment on the case. And you let this Romulus go on for two hours. What is wrong? What is, what is wrong? When do these people, when are they ever gone? Where's the city manager now? What a disgrace. And the mayor's got an appointment? Where? And then last week, on Wednesday, after the Copper Point Celebration Tuesday night, and there's a hundred people here for money to help children, and the mayor-elect doesn't show up. And the city manager says, I don't know where he is. He's not answering his texts and his phone call. He was probably up teaching and wherever he live, works. And, and two hundred, a hundred people outside to me said, what kind of town is this? Where a mayor-elect will have all these people trying to get money for, for, for food, for children and help, and he just doesn't show up. And the lawyers don't say anything. All they do is smile. Well, you know, this city needs to get rid of this law firm. It needs to get rid of, in my opinion, the, the city manager, it needs to get rid of, uh, maybe recall, uh, you, uh, Vice Mayor. Uh, you, when you get in office, you know, I, I would love to start a recall against you for what you did in the election and for what you've done. What you've done in buildings in your D four, if the public knew how remiss you are and all you care about is votes. And the rest of the children and people, yourself included, yourself included, and everybody who's not here included. You don't care about kids. The schools are dangerous. The whole police department should be investigated. Not just this one sergeant. There's the guy back there. Look at him. He does nothing. He says nothing. All he does is text. Send him back to Fort Lauderdale. Help this city. It's a disgrace what you're doing here.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, John, do we have anyone online?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we have five hands raised. I will start with first Annette Gray.
Annette Gray. Can you hear us, sir?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Annette Gray, yes, fifteen hundred Gateway Boulevard, Boynton Beach, three, three, four, two, six. I'm the founder of GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute. And I was in commission chamber this afternoon because I wanted to make a very impassioned speech about processes. And unfortunately, I had to leave because of a family emergency. But what I'm going to say now is very different. And the reason why I'm going to say very different comments is because of the report given by the board member of, from the school district. And I submitted a proposal to the city around all of the deficiencies that our young people are proposing uh, are, are facing. Uh, mental health, how kids learn, the different types of intelligence, experiential learning. I've been fighting for three years to put a center for entrepreneurship, workforce development and steam in the city of Boynton Beach. And this week I got an okay from a developer to donate a building on Federal Highway. And you know what? As a board, you guys are going to vote how you're going to vote. But at the end of the day, the universe showed me today that I was on the right path in terms of helping our young people. You don't give me any money, that's fine. I've been doing work in the city of Boynton Beach before I was a nonprofit. I was so disappointed when staff took money out of the budget to do an internship program when I, my nonprofit, GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute, has done a youth entrepreneurship program in the city on and off for the better part of fifteen years. First half of those years were out of my own pocket and second half of those years were money from Prince Foundation. Rest his toll, he left without a will. But I, the universe is divine. And the school board member who spoke today spoke truth into me. And I feel so blessed and I know that I'm on the right path in helping our young people. Fund my proposal, fine. Don't, that's fine too. Congratulations, Mayor Princeaga. I couldn't have been more disappointed by your no-show. That level of disrespect to people who support you is unheard of. I'm gonna leave on a positive note. I want to thank Christine Romulson, Romulus rather, and Justin and the mayor for making small organizations in Boynton Beach feel wanted. Not disrespected, whether or not we were in their, in their district. Have a great night.
Thank you there. Uh, John, is there another?
Next, we have Bradley Miller.
Bradley Miller. Name and address for the record, Bradley.
Thank you. Yes, Bradley Miller. I'm with Urban Design Studio at six ten Clemata Streets in West Palm Beach. And I'm, uh, uh, speaking here regarding the project at thirteen twenty South Federal that Dr. Snyder addressed earlier in the night. Uh, and, and you, uh, you voted to reconsider that discussion. It's very simple. It's very clear. There is no intention whatsoever to restrict the hours on retail uses from not being open on Sunday. The presentation I made restricted the hours for office uses. Uh, I did agree at the request of the mayor to restrict the hours of retail use to close at nine AM or nine PM, excuse me. But there was no intention whatsoever to restrict the hours for retail uses from being open on Sunday. Uh, my client has gone above and beyond what he's really needed to do here for a fantastic project that um, is, it's disappointing to, uh, that it be reconsidered when it was clear. Staff wrote the condition that the way they did, uh, in the wording, my understanding is that if it's um, silent on the issue, then the code prevails and the code allows retail uses to be open um, uh, Sun- Sunday to Saturday. So I wanted to get that on the record that, um, there was no intent for retail to be closed on Sunday, uh, at all. And I, I guess in closing, I don't know if you can do this to, uh, reconsider your prior action tonight and, uh, just, uh, get this resolved now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there one more, John?
Uh, next we have David Katz.
David Katz. Name and address for the record. Can you hear us? Maybe. David? Going once? David, going twice? Okay, is that the last one?
Uh, we have three more.
Three? Okay. We may come back to, uh, David Katz if, uh, at the end of the three. Uh, go to the next one, John.
Understood. Uh, Shirley Dat, you are self-muted.
Yes, good evening. My name is Shirley Dat, thirty-seven forty Max Place, Unit one oh two. Um, my two main concerns are, is there pretty much a jurisdiction, excuse me, I have braces on. I would like to know, why is it that certain people in Boynton Beach was not able to vote for the mayor, um, the, for certain mayors last week?
Is that, is that it?
No, the, uh, the main, the, another rea- another reason why I'm here too, um, is for SJ. I do not know SJ, but just looking at him reminds me of my son, of other people's sons. And I, I heard everything about you guys do not have the power to fire him. But who does have the power to fire him? Because this young boy died in December. He, this officer should not be working. He should not be on paid leave at all. Those are the two things I wanted to say.
We appreciate your comments. John, if you would go to the next one?
Next is Ray Whiteley.
Ray, name and address for the record.
Uh, good afternoon, two, three, nine Northeast Twelfth Avenue. Uh, can you, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Um, I just want to put into the comment, I was at the last commission meeting and, um, I must commend the community and Stanley Davis family and the Thompson family for how they've gone about organizing around Stanley Davis's death. Uh, they come to the commission meeting, we come to the commission meeting. When I'm not there in person, I'm online like I am tonight. And people are frustrated, but they come. The demonstrations that has been there, the Stanley Davis Day, it's been an awesome demonstration of unity. Not only unity, but collectively they are, uh, voicing their displeasure in the system. And this is the way we ask everybody to do it. Uh, I've been to other, um, though, in other cities and other demonstrations, when things don't go to quote unquote, right way, we always say, do it the right way. This is how you are supposed to do it. And we have a family and a community that's doing it the right way, quote unquote. And at the commission meeting, I believe, were intentionally put at the bottom of the agenda. And I felt it was disrespectful, not only for the Davis family, but it was disrespectful to the community. Uh, my question is, what's the protocol? Because this agenda is beautifully put together. It's been like this for as long as I've been coming to the commission meeting, and I don't know if I've missed a few, but I've never been a part of one that the agenda was changed to put public audience at the very end. And this one was. And people were in that commission meeting until two eight AM just for their voices to be heard. What's the protocol and who makes the decision on the order of the agenda? Just for clarity so that we all will know. If you could answer tonight, fine. But if you can't answer, I'll be calling as many of you as I can tomorrow just to find out what's the protocol, because the community deserves to know. And they also deserve to know, why were they placed on the back of the agenda when they're talking about something that's so passionate to us?
Thank you. Uh, again, uh, we will, uh, turn those over to staff and they will be responding back to you. Uh, Ray, thank you for your comments. Uh, I believe that was the last one. John, online?
Uh, Vice Mayor, we have, uh, two more.
Okay, go ahead.
Sharda Hunter.
Name and address for the record.
Sharda Hunter, um, Sunrise, Florida.
Can you speak up a little louder, please?
Yes, I bring my volume up. Um, can you hear me?
Barely. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, Sharda Hunter, um, Sunrise, Florida. Um, SJ's aunt, Shannon Thompson's, uh, older sister. Um, I just want to say to, uh, the young lady, I forget her name, who was addressing Pernell a moment ago, I understand you're frustrated. I can hear it in your voice because your voice sound like you were trembling, you know, when you were speaking. But I, you know, your tone was very condescending and it was flippant also. And I didn't find that cute either. You need to work on your attitude, girl. I understand it's your last day. Work on your attitude because that's very unbecoming. And don't ever talk to someone who's grieving the loss of a nephew or a son or try in that tone. That's disgusting. So I digress, I digress on that issue. Um, I just want to say, you know, you guys making, throw two people out for their being unruly, but how you gonna throw a whole city out? You know, how you, and, and when it, when it, time has passed and nothing has happened, how you, let me tell you something, the streets are talking. Everybody's getting frustrated. Everybody's tired of us getting pushed to the back of the agenda. And, and you know, we're getting tired of it. You, you do not have to wait until this investigation. They'll say, y'all can't fire him. Does this officer not have a supervisor? The chief of police, you mean you can't fire this guy? Look how long he's been harassing people, blacks. After Jaden died, he should have, he should have been fired. And let me remind you guys, and I hope the public is listening to me, Officer Mark Sh- Shone or Song, he left the scene of the crime where he chased my nephew, regardless of how he, well, however he's saying, you know, it happened, my nephew. You know, it happened. My nephew was reckless driving. But Mark Sean has a history of reckless driving. How? Because it resulted in three deaths. Who's the reckless driver? He left my nephew at the scene of the crime dead. Where did he go? That alone is reason for him to be fired. He should have been fired based off that damning investigation. The streets are tired. I'm letting y'all know right now. You better fire this guy, or there's gonna be an uproar. And I'm letting y'all know right now. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Next one?
Katisha Waters.
Katisha, can you hear us? Can you hear me? You may be self muted. We can't hear you. Katisha? Going once? Katisha going twice? Okay, we'll go back to David Katz. David Katz, are you there? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, in, in all essence, I wanted to comment when you were talking about the reconsideration that I was agreeing with Commissioner Katz, that the commission should move forward with an abundance of caution, because once you've created property rights, the courts are very, 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 very much in favor of the property owner and what's been offered them by either the city or whatever governmental agency. So to try to reconsider it, you, you're gonna have to move in an abundance of caution. The other thing is, is that and I was kind of disturbed by what Commissioner Romulus suggested, and it sounded like she was basically trying to step over the line and possibly violating the charter. Commissioners, for the people in the audience, cannot get involved in personnel issues. That's what the city manager is for, and possibly, in this case, of the police officer, the union. And they can't expect the commission to fire somebody who works for the city, except for the attorney or except for the city manager. So to ask, to even suggest to go across the line of violating the charter or even suggesting it, if that's in fact what Commissioner Romulus was, was going towards, would, would not be the proper thing to do. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I believe that takes care of everyone online and, and the audience. Is that correct, John? Are there any other raised hands?
There's a hand that was just raised by Esther Jerry.
What was that?
There's a hand raised by Esther Jerry.
Okay. Go ahead. Esther J? We can't hear you.
Esther Jerry is self muted.
Are you self muted? Hello? Going once? Going twice?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we have you. Loud and clear. Yeah, three cents. Give us your name and address, please.
Esther Jerry, four two three Northwest Seventh Avenue. And I would like to say congratulations to Ty for mayor. And we hope that as mayor of Boynton Beach, that you would make an impact on our community, because we, the members of District Two, are very upset and disappointed with the former diocese that we have now. And I'm here to stand with the Thompson and the Davis family. We have eleven more days and it'll be three months before this child, Stanley the Third, lost his life at the hands of Officer Mark Sean. Now, I'm here to say that my disappointment is with Chief Gregory. We were to hold a Q and A and ask our questions and have our, our questions answered, but it was canceled. And they said that the reason why it was canceled is because the fire, the family had hired an attorney. But before the city agreed to answer our questions, they knew that this family had obtained an attorney to get answers, because obviously the diocese at hand is not giving us any answers that we deserve. Now, I know we live in Boynton Beach and this incident took place in West Palm Beach, where this seventy-nine-year-old woman lost her life on the Royal Park Bridge. And this case is under investigation, but the West Palm Beach Police Department was able to release the nine-one-one calls concerning this seventy-nine-year-old woman. And yet, we have yet to release any phone calls from the Boynton Beach Police Department. And I'm, we're all frustrated, we're angry, we feel like this is a slap in our face. We feel like our voices doesn't matter, because we come to meeting after meeting, and yet we get no satisfaction. You, you fire officers for sexual misconduct? And here you have an officer that have taken three lives. There's no coming back from this. And you guys refuse to fire him. You refuse to terminate him, yet he allowed to sit home and live off taxpayer dollars, making over a hundred thousand dollars a year, just to do whatever he want to District Two. We need answers. And we're not threatening you guys, so don't say that we threaten you. We're expression, we're expressing our anger and disappointment in you guys, all of your, um, the diocese.
Will you bring your comments to a close, please?
We need answers. We need you to fire Officer Mark Sean and arrest him for what he did to SJ. And we need it now.
Thank you. That concludes public comments, I believe. John, we don't have any more online, correct?
There is one more hand raised by LLSJ.
Okay. Leslie?
LLSJ is self muted.
We hear you. Go ahead. At least I thought we heard. Hello? Check to see if you're self muted. Hello? Okay, that, going once? Twice? Any more, John?
We've had a hand raised by Brad Hicks.
Brad Hicks, you're on. Brad Hicks? Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Brad Hicks, three one five Eleventh Avenue. You know, as citizens of Boynton, as well as taxpayers. You know, we voice our opinions, come to the meetings. And you guys that sit, the mayors, the commissioners, that we vote in as candidates, we expect that you guys, you know, hear us out and listen to our opinions as well as concerns and stuff. But yet, it's like y'all still give us the deaf ear and don't do nothing about none of our concerns and stuff. It's like we're just wasting our time. Boynton Beach City Hall, as well as the, uh, Boynton Beach Police Department, is rated the worst as a town. People that's in other surrounding towns and cities and stuff, talk about how Boynton is the worst. We have the worst police, uh, police under force, as well as the people that's in the building department, at the city hall and stuff, that gives people a hard time when they trying to come up there with, trying to add on to their house or build certain things or coming to them with some type of construction project or something that's going on. You give them the hardest times. But I feel that, hey, we need a whole revamp of the Bo, uh, Boynton Beach Police Department, as well as the city hall. If you guys ain't gonna listen to the, um, the citizens that's paying tax dollars and stuff, and ain't doing nothing, y'all sit there on the panels, but it's like y'all nonchalant to our, uh, opinions and stuff that we got, that we be voicing to you guys, as well as I stand with the Davis family and the Thompsons, you know, justice for SJ and Mark Sean needs to be fired. He needs to be held accountable for his actions. That's it.
Thank you very much. And with that, I believe that concludes everyone who wanted to speak, so I will close public audience. Before we go to administrative, I'd like to make a comment about our city manager, Laura Leveria. She was having, not she, but she went out because she got a, uh, information about her mom was having issues. And she's on the phone with the nurse, and she's going to try and make it back in here as soon as she can. So she has a very sickly mother, so that's why she left out. Thank you very much. At that, at that, we'll go down to five. Ratify the selection of library board chair. Yes.
Thank you for, for allowing me to speak. Thank you. I, I just wanted to take some time to rec, recognize some of my comments I said earlier that may have been just, that were properly labeled. I, I was frustrated and I do want to apologize to Mr. Davis, because I, I'm the person that I'm willing to apologize when I'm out of line. And I know that my tone was probably a little flippant and it came off harsh, so I apologize for that. My frustration is not with you, sir. My frustration is with this situation. And you may not think it, and, and I know individuals in the public certainly keep making this, this accusation that we don't feel the frustration, but we do. And so that's where my frustration was coming from. So I do apologize to you, sir, if I came off harsh. I just wanted to make sure that that was stated clearly for you to hear. I, I, I want you to understand that. We've spoken privately in the past. And I, I do want you to understand, I do respect you, and I understand that you're grieving. And at the same time, you know, we're all human. Everybody has emotions. And mine got a little, a little out of hand as I was speaking to you, so I do apologize for that. Thank you very much, Mayor. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Romulus. We now continue with item five A, ratify the selection of library board chair and vice chair.
Motion to approve recommendation. Second?
It's been moved and properly second. Discussion. Hear none, all in favors, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose nay? Ayes have it unanimously. Item five B, consideration of a special city commission meeting to accept staff ranking of application to the notice of funding opportunities for use for the city's American Rescue Plan Act, funds that, and to award funds based upon application eligibility and proposed programming. Commissioner Katz?
I'd request a motion to table, because the number of individuals that will have to attend that meeting, once they're sworn in, are not up here to set the date. So we would be setting a date and time and two or potentially three people don't exist yet on this commission and they will be obligated to attend, so I'd recommend the motion to table.
I will second that.
Okay. The movement properly second, all in favors state, state aye?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion to table unanimously. Okay, that's take, takes us down to consent agenda, I believe.
Motion to approve.
And, okay, I have a motion to approve, except for item C and D, which have been tabled.
That's right. I will second.
Okay, we, motion to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
Propose nay? Motion cares unanimously. Takes us over to consent bids and purchases over one hundred thousand.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. The motion to approve consent over one hundred thousand. Any discussion on that?
No.
Hear none? All in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
Propose nay? Here is unanimously. Public hearing. The city commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. A, approved request for conditional use, approval for Raising Cane's Restaurant, dual drive-through facility on BJ's Wholesale Club, out parcel located at fifteen fifty West Boynton Beach Boulevard, with the planned commercial development, PCD zoning district applicant. The applicant here.
Mr. Vice Mayor, this is a quasi judicial proceeding. What I'd like to do is ask if anybody's gonna speak on this item to be sworn in. And there are two separate requests for approval. I want to make sure the applicant, uh, place on the record whether they consent to the items being heard together as one item, or they wish to have them heard separately. And, but at this time, what I'd ask, is anybody even tends to speak on this item, just as standard be sworn in, and that's where you win. Just, have you swear affirm the statements or testimony given this evening? Should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then anybody who speaks, just to identify yourself, name and address, and your, I guess, relationship to the property or role in the process.
Great, thank you. Scott Backman with the law firm of Dunamisco and Backman. Fourteen Southeast Fourth Street, Boca Raton is where our offices are located. To address Mr. Sorillo's first point, no objection to, uh, hearing and presenting the items. Collectively, I think that's how they appear on the agenda anyway. Um, I know we submitted a PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if that's available or, or can be pulled up.
Does the commission want to see PowerPoint? Yes.
Great, thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
May I ask that we limit the presentation to about ten minutes?
And that, that, that won't be a problem at all. Not at all. Believe me, we're gonna keep this very short.
We have reviewed the slides in advance, so this is a summary more than anything.
And it, I'll defer to the commission. We don't need to show our PowerPoint. I really just wanted to, to stand up, present a little bit, tell you a little bit about Raising Cane's.
Do you concur with that?
I would just recommend for going to slide six, which will just show the aerial, so people understand the location.
Absolutely.
Beyond that, it's a, a fast food fried chicken place, so.
Good.
So yeah, so, so Raising Cane's, obviously, we're, we're very excited. It's, uh, it's a relatively new use that's coming into South Florida. Very excited to be here. Located in many other locations throughout the country. The location is, is up on the screen before you is the south side of Boynton Beach Boulevard. It's one of the out parcels in the BJ Shopping Center, just to the west of Congress. This is an old Wells Fargo bank. It's been out of commission for many, many years. I've had a variety of clients over the years. Take a look at it for one reason or another, in an attempt to redevelop. And we've been working on this project for many months, very closely with the city, with the various departments within the city. We've conducted traffic studies, queuing analyses, uh, with regard to the site plan, substantially upgrading, uh, the landscaping. Again, it's all part of the presentation, but I'll, I'll open it up to any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Comments from the commission? Commissioner Katz?
Um, just to say thank you for your client and coming into this space. I think Wells Fargo at this location shut down it when COVID hit. And there's another Wells Fargo, like literally a quarter mile away on Congress Avenue, just south of the intersection. So I commend you on locating right next to Chick-fil-A. I'm sure the competition will be brisk.
Okay. Before we make a motion, we hear the public audience.
Yes, sir.
Those who would like to comment on this project, please come forward. Were you, were you sworn in?
I didn't know if it's people that are.
Well, you can swear, you can swear again right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. Which hand?
Please raise your right hand.
Right hand.
Okay.
Affirm statements or testimony given this evening? They should be to shoot the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I'm just commenting. Um, okay, uh, hmm. We're approving a, a dual drive-through facility similar to like checkers? Hmm. That area is pretty crowded, and I, I, and I hear you're giving him the congratulation, right? So I'm a vegetarian, so I'm not really into fried food, and I just, for the life of me, I don't see why we can't get any options that is in within our communities. I live in that district, and I sure would wish Boynton would invest in, um, businesses coming in that are healthy, clean eating, um, that is not going to affect the citizens that are already struggling with health. And I get it, Wells Fargo, who needs another bank? But who needs another fast food restaurant in a very condensed area with a dual drive-through? Chick-fil-A doesn't even have a dual drive-through, right? So that's just my concern. Let's see if we can invest in more than just, um, fast food, deep fried vats. Uh, I know the lady just left who is the, the ARP doctor. Um, it's just, it's distasteful for me to have another company coming that is not producing health, healthy options within my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Chair?
Yes.
Just for the public's edification, this is a private piece of property. The city has no say in what goes here beyond the zoning and land use, and it's a permissible use. We, we can't dictate what business chooses to rent what private property. So that is why the property owner has made their free choice.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I was sworn in. Ernest McNally, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street, Uni four oh seven, Boynton Beach. Uh, I go to, uh, that area a lot. It's horribly crowded. Uh, I came before the board when they were talking about the group coming in, and some of the commissioners were saying, isn't this great for us? It's such great food and great for the kids. While in the meeting, I Googled the health rating of this firm that you just. It is the most unhealthy fast food place in the country. It's the highest fat, the highest salt, the highest, uh, uh, trans fat, and a guy like Katz sits there and says, eh, isn't it great for the kids? You're so disrespectful to the health of children. Thankfully, you're not here anymore, and you probably approved it for political money, which is why you all approve everything. Everything's political in this town. That's all it is, political. You know, somebody comes in, all these fancy lawyers, and they're willing to donate money? We'll approve it. You put an oil well.
This project, we, please keep your comments.
That's what I'm talking about. Well, what am I talking about?
You're talking about personal type.
I'm, what?
Let, let me reject your assertion that I am bought off by fried chicken.
I can't wait till you're gone. Can you ever stop talking with that Romulus?
Sir?
They never shut up interrupting people. Mayor, I, I mean, city attorney, he really can't keep doing that. You either, mice mayor. It's horrible, greasy, rotten food. Google it yourself. And then, look, he keeps shaking his head no. You want the students to eat that food? Why don't you Google it, Mr. Katz, you hypocrite?
Hey, 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 we won't have this, okay? Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Next? Is that it from public comment? Oh, okay. Can I have a motion on this?
Second.
We moved in second, I think we have to have a roll call.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that is for both of the requests in one motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Sister Gibson, would you call a roll?
Vice Mayor, hey?
Aye.
Katz?
Yes.
I don't know if she heard you. Commissioner Romulus?
Yes, I didn't hear her, but yes.
Commissioner Pensarga?
Yes.
Vote is four oh.
Voters care unanimously. Item four eight B, propose audience number twenty-two ten, second reading.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll read the title in ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Article three of Chapter eighteen in Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances entitled Municipal Police Officers Retirement Trust Fund, amending section eighteen dash one six nine, requirements for retirement benefit amounts, provided for conflict severability and effective date, and this is a public hearing.
This is the second reading on this particular ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Been a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone from the audience like to speak on this particular item? Please keep your comments to this item.
I will try. Um, let me do a quick, don't start my minutes yet, please, thank you. Um, this is a second reading for, um, uh, an ordinance municipal, municipal police officers retirement trust fund. Just for clear, um, clarification, um, city attorney, I know I can ask you questions because you're staff, right?
I would direct any responses to the mayor, to the vice mayor.
No, but they, they can't communicate with me, but your staff, you can communicate with me, correct?
Your questions have to go through the chair.
They have to go to where?
The chair.
Uh, who is who? Oh, gentleman here? Okay, but he can't respond to me, so I want to go to the staff because he's going to ask the staff.
What is your question?
You can't respond. You wouldn't know the answer. That's why you're going to ask the staff.
You have two minutes and fifteen seconds left.
Okay. You sure? Because you call her Sister Gibson, and you can't mix Miss Church and State together, sir.
Please ask your question.
You have two minutes left.
Katz, you know that, right? We're fellow teachers together. Why you didn't pipe up and say something when he said Sister Gibson?
People can call people sisters.
Really? Just like the gentleman can call you a hypocrite, and you be okay, and you sit there? Because that's what Miss Romulus said, right? My bad, my bad. You said, comment, stay on topic. That's right, keep it simple. You right, you right, you right. So, this is for the municipal police officers retirement trust fund, right? So we are, you are proposing an amendment to retirement benefits amounts, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date thereof, right? This is the second read for this? It's a yes or no. You said ask the question. I asked you a question.
Read, it says second reading.
You know what? I should have, hmm, hmm, hmm. You know what I find that's strange? Is that when you have someone come up here and follow your proceedings, and you ask questions, you never give a direct answer when you're directly asking someone a question. Why do you do that? I'm asking you a question.
I don't have to answer you.
There, there goes rest my point. Listen, for the record, we need to get better at running our meetings effectively, right? Because I sit on two boards in this city, and everyone here pick and choose how they want to respond or what ordinance you're going to follow, and then you defer to the attorney that says back to you, we can't ask you direct questions.
This is the second reading, you are correct.
I don't want to hear anything from you, because when you want to pipe up, you want to speak. Speak for your teachers that you allegedly go to the Tallahassee to fight for, which you don't, right? So you got yourself out of the civics classroom to do nothing. Don't get me started, okay?
Thank you.
We will see each other again, Mr. Katz, trust.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, there is a hand in the virtual audience.
We have one more, uh, John, uh, in the audience, so we're going to hear that one.
I'm still sworn in, right?
And then we will have.
Am I still sworn in?
Yeah, you are.
Okay.
Simone, sir.
I think I'm the only one, uh, on this side of the, uh, microphone sworn in. It does, some of the statements I hear make me wonder. Uh, Ernest McNally, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street, Uni four oh seven, Boynton Beach. So I've been going to the police, uh, meetings here, and when I started going, uh, I was told, oh my goodness, the public is here. It's the first person to come in fifteen years. And I thought, gee, I wonder why? And then you start listening. And then you start listening. We've got people starving here, and with all that CRA money and all this stuff coming around, you got to hear these police what they're asking for. Everything's for themselves. They want like seven hundred sick days. They want everything and the most, and it never stops. And you know what? A lot of that money that's given to us from the federal government, you're giving it to the police environment. And you know what is even worse? The other divisions in the city are getting cheated. And you know, the police don't care, the firemen don't care, as long as they get what they want. It, it is a crying shame, and the public should go to those meetings. And if you listen, it's hard to believe what goes on. It is beyond belief what goes on, especially when you consider the record of this police department, going back at least twelve years. Go back to two thousand and ten and look at the litigations. The law firm's been with us thirty years. You don't know the amount of money they've made on litigations for this police department. And what do you do? Instead of going to trial where everything can come out, you keep making settlements, which drives up our insurance, the taxpayers have to pay, we have to pay the deductible, and you all get away with what you're doing. Racial stuff, lifestyle bias stuff, reverse discrimination, and police that scare the heck out of us. This guy's scary over here. And you think it's funny, Katz, you know why? Because you were the one that helped, and you, the police, and y'all helped this guy get elected mayor so that you cover up the S.J. case. That's what it's all about, the politics in this city. It's nothing but police cover-up. And look at his election thing. He said, oh, Boynton Beach Police and Fire Departments and teachers support us. You know why? Because it's all political and a payoff. You know what? If that S.J. thing ever goes to trial, you're all going to be in the trial, and you're all going to be culpable. And I hope it does go to trial. No more settlements for y'all. Keep smiling, Mr. Katz.
John, is there anyone online?
Yes, we have a hand raised by David Katz.
David Katz? David Katz?
Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address for the record.
Okay, well, first of all, I just want to say that I had my hand raised for the Raisin Cane thing, and I don't know if there's some sort of delay going on, but that's what I wanted to speak on, and it's over and done with. So I didn't know why I wasn't recognized then. So that's all I have to say.
We apologize for that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, speak.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, welcome. Is that it, John? Okay. Hearing no more. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Katz?
So we had a motion in second on the pension. We need a vote, correct?
Correct, you have a motion in a second. Motion by Commissioner Katz, second by Commissioner Pensarga. I'll do the roll call.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor, hey?
Aye.
Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pensarga?
Yes.
Vote is four oh.
Thank you. Motion cares unanimously.
Chair?
Yes.
Um, request to have staff table item nine A to the next meeting. Um, it's a new, uh, data entry system. Um, and again, half of the commission will not be here, whereas half of the new commission will be here in, in the future meeting.
Second.
Okay, uh, been motion to table item nine A. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
And all not in favors, they, they stand the same sign? The ayes have it, so that item is tabled. Uh, takes us over to item twelve A, Commissioner?
Um, this was, uh, an item that I'd asked to explore last meeting, but, uh, as a consequence of a current city commissioner being elected to become the next mayor. Um, at least for me, um, I'm not concerned about passing off the community support funds because the new mayor will have had access to their funds prior to transferring positions. Uh, so, uh, at least for me on this topic, I don't know about anyone else, but it, it's moot for my intended purpose.
Okay. Any comments from the commission? I agree. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
So that will take care of all of that. We have future items, and we're not to adjourn, that's it.
Uh, Mayor, do you question for?
Before we go. Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
Sorry, just question for legal. Do we have to do, take any action on that last item twelve A, or do we just not discuss? I just want to make sure we're following proper protocol.
Is it a postponed indefinitely motion?
Or you, you just, or you can just remove it from the agenda? Yeah, I think we just have to remove it from the agenda.
Yeah, and that's how I interpret it, it's removed.
That was the consensus.
Yes.
Remove it from the agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We, we'll so adjourn.